Number 349787 was not in those minutes. Like that added to the minutes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gates?
Mayor D. O'Daddy, on our meeting on November 28th and again on October 24th, council supported our position on, to the NHS and Dr. Kevin Smith honoring the memorandum of understanding to review and the promise of the ministry to help to review the hospital improvement plan. And I'm asking, have we received any reply from the NHS as of yet? It's almost two months now, so...
Maybe we'll look first at staff. Counselor Iannone and myself, we did have a verbal conversation with Dr. Smith. But in terms of actual physical written report, I'm not aware of anything that has come back. Maybe I don't know if staff has received anything?
No. And you've got a motion on the floor for the minutes?
Okay.
Right, okay.
Well, it is part of the minutes because I had requested on the 28th. I asked if it would send. And I'm asking tonight that, you know, here's a council that has asked for a response from Dr. Smith, and it hasn't came yet. And I'm not going to get into it, I'll do it under new business. But we have some real issues here in Niagara, and I'll talk on that later in the council meeting. But it's been two months. I think they owe this council a response to our request, a fair request that was unanimously supported by this conference.
Okay, so we'll look forward to that under new business. Thank you, Counselor. Is there any other comments on the minutes? If you see none, we'll call a vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest this week? Yes, Counsel Morocco?
Yes, I have one. A check issued to my husband, check number 350543.
Okay, thank you. Counseler Wayne?
Yeah, I'm glad you said get comfortable. I've got three meetings worth here. From the November 14th meeting, I was absent due to illness that night. Pd 2011-79, I own a budding property. From the last meeting, November 28th, the day my mother died, Pd 2, I'm sorry, MW 2011-5 boards, the sidewalk maintenance, I had three properties affected by the recommendations. And TS 2011-48, the transit agreement with USU, it affects my daughter who's at Brock University and uses that service. And tonight, there is an in-camera matter, I own a budding property.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other pecuniary interest? Okay, and I have a check, number 350704, you know, to myself as well. Okay, move on. Okay, we'll start off with deputations. We have a couple of them. First up, we've got the Cares Foundation 10th Annual Strikeout Violence Bowling Tournament. And I understand Haley Bateman is here today. Hi Haley. She's Development Manager. And Tom Snodgrass, Board Member, will speak to us in this regard. Welcome.
Thank you. We're happy to be here. Your worship, me, you Daddy and Council, I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the Cares Foundation 10th Annual Strikeout Violence Bowling Tournament in support of Women's Place of South Niagara, an organization I'm very proud to work at. Women's Place of South Niagara operates two shelters in the Niagara region. Nova House here in Niagara Falls and Serenity Place in Wellands. Women and children experiencing abuse and violence are able to access our shelter and many free and confidential programs and services 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Last year alone, Women's Place of South Niagara received 1,557 crisis calls, provided safe shelter to 463 women and children, a number that has nearly doubled from the previous year. As we are partially funded by the Ministry of Community and Social Services, we are required to fundraise the remaining portions through private donations, municipal support, and through events such as the Strikeout Violence Bowling Tournament. This event raised $25,000 last year. All funds raised through this event support both shelters for women and children who are experiencing abuse and help us maintain the vital operations of our shelters and the programs that educate and counsel women. Without this event, we would not be able to continue the work we do. The Strikeout Violence Bowling Tournament is held annually in celebration of Women's Day. This year, the event is being held on Friday, March 2nd. At this time, I would like to introduce my friend, Tom Snodgrass, a committee member of the Strikeout Violence Bowling Tournament.
Thank you Haley. And on behalf of our committee, I want to thank Mayor D. O'Daddy and Council for allowing us to be here today. This tournament is put on in partnership with the Niagara Regional Police Service to not only raise funds for Women's Place of South Niagara, but to work together to make the elimination of domestic violence a priority in our community. This tournament gets bigger each year and is a testament of a caring community, and I am excited to be a part of. The bowlers and sponsors represent a broad spectrum of society: police, business, healthcare, social workers, service clubs, politicians, and everyday caring people. Although this is an extremely fun and worthwhile event, I look forward to the day when it will not be necessary to hold it. We are challenging all cities in the region to take part in this event, and we'll be presenting a top team of the tournament with an award at the dinner reception held at Club Italia immediately following bowling. And I understand you guys won it last year, didn't you?
We don't like to brag, but...
The city councilors of Niagara Falls participate in this tournament on Friday, March 2nd, to support Women's Place of South Niagara. On behalf of Women's Place, the Strikeout Violence Bowling Tournament Committee, and hundreds of clients that Women's Place services, we thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Yes, Counsel Iannone, Counsel Maves, did you want to speak to this, Counselor?
No, I think you won it the one year I wasn't there. It would be on the table.
We'll see. Counsel Maves?
Hi, your worship. This is such a big event for us, Counsel Cario and myself. We went and had our own tailor-made bowling ball, so we're ready to go. And I hope we can repeat the performance and bring back the trophy to the city.
All right, so I think that sounds like, is that a motion that we're going to be putting a team in, Counselor?
Yes, a motion.
Okay, and we got it seconded by Counseler Pieterangelo. And how many, now just so we know now, well, we've got the motion on the floor. Who's available to join the team here?
We need eight participants.
Eight, okay.
Eight on the team.
Okay, well, we've got Counsel Iannone, Maves, Cario, Gates, myself, probably Pieterangelo, probably Morocco, and actually Counsel Thompson, didn't you come out last time too? Yeah, he had those fancy striped polka dot pants you wore last night. He led the scoring, that's right.
Yeah, we did.
He might have, yeah, he might have. He was keeping score, wasn't he? Yeah, that's right, yeah. So it looks like we got a solid team here. We've got a motion on the floor to put the team in, and we've got a lot of participation. Maybe we'll all be there. I know Counsel Wayne, maybe, depending on the date?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Wayne, question?
Just before we call the motion, if there's any members of the public watching who are interested in putting a team together, where do they get more information?
Great point, good question.
If you search for us, just Google us, Women's Place of South Niagara. Our website is womensplacsn.org. Our events are listed there, and you can register online, which is something new we're doing this year, so it's easy peasy to get involved.
See that? Easy peasy.
Easy peasy.
Perfect. Okay, we'll call the motion. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next up, we've got some kickboxers in the room, I understand. Uh, kickboxers in the room, someone make sure you're still handy. Demonstration. Counsel Thompson, go up here, please. He's going to take all three out at one time. That's what he said to me. He's been practicing. Gentlemen, come on up this way here, if you would. All right, welcome. How are you doing? Welcome. Hey, well, come on up here, we're going to give you a few words. Maybe we can, we've got, I guess as I'm speaking, there's going to be a potter point in the background, we're very high tech here, and I can picture. Or maybe, maybe we're not going to. Always surprising around here, right, Counsel? After qualifying at the National Championships in Ottawa earlier this year, three members of Cool Con Jiu-Jitsu, is that correct? In Niagara Falls participated in the World Karate and Kickboxing Council World Championships in Spain. That was on October 31st and November 4th of this year as part of Team Canada. Michael Pizzano, Chad Howard, and Travis McConery all won bronze medals for Canada. The team members participated in two events: semi-contact point fighting, where competitors attempt to gain points by scoring first in two-minute matches, and light contact kickboxing, which are two-round fights scored in the same manner as mixed martial arts fighting. And anyone that follows that, they have their big 140 at the Arcana Center on Saturday night. But they don't allow intentional knockouts. Do they sometimes happen unintentionally?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You're supposed to pull those punches, I can say for that. Okay, all right. He walked into it, probably, right? Yep, for sure. Chad Howard, we'll start off with Chad. Chad, you want to step forward here? We'll talk about you for a second, personally, just kind of turn this way. Chad Howard took home bronze medals in two events. In the men's 18-plus under-85 kilogram point fighting, he made his way to the semifinals and lost a close fight to the eventual gold medalist, American Robert Wallace. In the men's under-85 light contact kickboxing, Chad again found himself in the semifinals, where he lost a tough match to the fighter from Northern Ireland. Chad's performance earned him a bronze medal in both of the divisions. And Chad, we've got a beautiful presentation on behalf of all the members of City Council and the residents of our city. We're very proud of you. Travis McConery, Travis, come over here. Travis, welcome. See, I'm always a little worried, since he by accident knocked that guy out, I don't want him to by accident do anything to me. Travis, there's a lot of people that would be enjoying that. Travis McConery, a summer student. Stop that. A summer student employee with the city of Niagara Falls took a bronze medal in the men's 18-plus heavyweight plus 90 kilogram light contact kickboxing division after wins over the Northern Ireland fighter, so he made up for what happened with your Northern Ireland buddy, and a fellow Canadian team member. Unfortunately, Travis's day was cut short due to an injury, which forced him to withdraw mid-match and in the semifinals. This was the first major international competition for both Travis and Chad, and was a great experience for these guys, say their coach, Michael Pizzano. It was good for them to see competitors of this skill level around the world compete with them and do so well. So on behalf, Travis, of all the members of City Council and myself and all the residents of Niagara Falls, we're very proud of your accomplishments. And head instructor and coach, Michael Pizzano, returned to the international competition after a 16-year layoff. And after 16 years, there wasn't too much rust on this gate, he took a bronze medal in the veterans 35-plus heavyweight point fighting division. And on behalf of members of City Council, residents here, and myself, we want to say congratulations, Michael, for doing so well. There you have it, ladies and gentlemen, three representatives of our city that are making Niagara Falls proud in Spain. Did you guys want to say anything? I'm sorry.
No.
Did you guys want to?
I'm prepared to say well, actually.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. Okay, thank you. Sorry, guys. I get a little carried away sometimes, I don't suck.
I didn't have a chance.
I'm a black belt in talking. See it before you. All right, we've got some business service awards that we're very proud to acknowledge tonight. We're going to start off with art craft. So I understand we've got some family members of art craft, if they would come up here and join me. You? How are you?
Welcome.
All right. There you go. All right, we've got a wonderful plaque which I'm going to give to you in just one second. What are we trying to do? Yeah, why don't you come on, guys, come on up this way, and we're going to face everybody. The Niagara, this is a 50-year service award in our community. Anyone who's been in business themselves realizes it's not easy being in business for yourself. A few years, let alone 50 years. So, oh, we're going to do a picture first. You need a picture, hold on. Get your plaque. And that's the odd part, Betty's only 39, and how could they be 50? We're not sure yet, but... Okay, I can get that to read now, Betty. I'm going to read it a little bit here. Niagara Art Craft Woodwork Company Limited, known today as Art Craft Kitchens, and everyone is familiar with the seat on the side of the highway, was founded in 1961 by Daniel Trabuco along with his wife, Betty. One thing that has not changed over the years is that Art Craft respects time-honored craftsmanship, creating leading premium brand custom cabinets for homes. What has changed is that they're now applying computer engineering to produce custom-made cabinets, and I got a tour recently, and absolutely amazing. Everything is made bang on. And you know what the neat thing about it is? A lot of the big, oh, we've got a picture, oh, yeah, there I go. With the safety glasses, so it looks like I actually know what I'm doing. And what's really neat is, here we are, we've got all these Toronto builders, and who are they buying from? Art Craft, right here in Niagara Falls. Very, very impressive. They've got an 80,000 square foot manufacturing plant on Tenshu, like we said, visible from the QEW. Art Craft Kitchens is a leading manufacturer of premium quality, European-style cabinetry for new homes, and a perfect fit for custom renovation projects. And when you see the computer technology that they utilize, you appreciate, that's how they're able to make things fit perfectly for retros. I saw firsthand, along with our business development staff, unfortunately, Daniel's not able to attend this evening. Mr. Trabuco was honored this year by the National Kitchen and Cabinet Association as an inductee to the Hall of Fame for his lifetime achievement for advancing the industry in Canada. He was a founding member of the CKTA, which he represented Niagara Falls on very well at a national level, taking an active role on the association back to 1960. The firm in 1983, the firm in 1983, no, today you employ 75 people, okay? 75 people. And this evening, representing Art Craft is Betty, Daniel Junior, and your wife, Jennifer. We want to say, on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls, we're very, very proud of this company who's gone on to do such quality work, and everything, every time that they go out, they're representing our city, and it makes us proud to know that. That's right here in Niagara Falls with some very much homegrown talent. So on behalf of myself and all members of council, we present them this beautiful plaque, and more importantly, we show them our appreciation.
Actually, I just want to say a few things really quick. The one picture I'm glad didn't show up, the guy who operates our saw had a picture, had a t-shirt on that said, "I have multiple personalities, and none of us like you." So I'm glad that picture didn't get in. Our Lord's man, yeah. Second thing is, the 80,000 square feet is a marketing number. If anybody here from NFAQ, it's close to the 70s. But listen, they say it takes a village to raise a child, and we've, you know, learned over the years that it's really a community that, it takes a community to keep a business running for 50 years. And we have, we want to say, give our sincere appreciation and saying to the city for their support over the years, and to the customers, suppliers, employees of this region that have kept us going, because it takes a group effort. And I think nothing more, or nothing says it's better than, in fact, we're in such excellent company through the other award winner, I know Snyder's are getting 60-year awards, and I think we've been customers, or they've been customers of ours since the very first year of our business, over 50 years, and they're still a strong supporter of us, so we appreciate it. So, thank you, on behalf of us, and my father.
Did our kickboxing guys leave already by the wedding? Okay, I just realized, okay, oh, they're waiting out there, okay, great. They also got these really nice plastic, okay. They're very nice awards. What's that? Oh, they're going to hit me. Next up, 50 years of service, Circus World Displays. If I could call up our friends, the Jane family? What's that?
I got my Christmas card on my back.
We've got the Jane family here. We've got Ramish, Ramish here, father of the family. Sujata, mother. We've got Raj, one of the boys, and Deepak, one of the other boys. And we have a wonderful plaque for you too. I'd like to present. Okay, I just see Ramish. And on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls, I'd like to read some nice things, and those that we have prepared, and these are, I forgot what I lost. Circus World Displays Limited, CWD, has been an evolving company developing into a leader in consumer electronics. CWD designs, manufactures, markets products under brand names that we'll all be very, very familiar with, such as Electra Home, Citizen, Magnasonic, and SVAT. SVAT, that's what I call it. What do you call it?
SVAT.
SVAT. And you'll probably also recognize them from the Service Road, not too far from the Trabuco family as well. And this past summer, I got to go to their 50-year corporate company picnic at Queensland, bless you. And I was very, very impressed with the professionalism, with the growth, with the direction, and the success this company has had. CWD's products are sold worldwide through various distributors. Their headquarters, as I mentioned, are in Niagara Falls. They've got approximately 100 full-time employees. It owns and operates out of three mixed-use office warehouse locations in our city. In addition, the company has a Toronto, Ontario satellite office and 10 distribution centers located throughout North America. Their most recent expansion is its presence in China. And some of the big places that sell their products are the big ones, like the Walmarts of the world, and Zellers, and Costco, and all the big places that you shop at, you'll see, and probably one of the more popular ones that you'll see are, you know those old-fashioned radios? You know the old-fashioned tabletop wooden ones? And they play, you know, CDs and records, and they'll play all sorts of things. And these are one of the popular items that you're going to see all over the place. Matter of fact, what's neat about them, they're retro, and now, you remember, records were gone for so long? Well, now they've got these players that play records again, vinyl LPs, and as well, you can plug in and do USB and play all sorts of downloaded things as well. But on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls and members of council and all the residents, we're very, very proud. 100 employees, because of this family, being so successful and deciding to stay in Niagara Falls. They could have relocated anywhere, but they chose to stay here. And what do they say? Bloom where you planted, and we're very glad that they're planted right here in Niagara Falls. And on behalf of all of us, we'd like to say a big, warm thank you and congratulations. We're going to say a few words here first.
Short and sweet, though. On behalf of our family, we'd like to thank the city of Niagara Falls and the council for its recognition. As anyone knows, you know, five years is difficult not in any business. Jim has supported us by coming up to our picnic, giving us some advice on our product, which is always appreciated. And it's just great, and as Jim mentioned, our company is international now, and most of our business actually is United States, we sell to, so we're taking their money, we're bringing it back to Canada. And, you know, we've always had a number of consultants tell us to relocate, you know, you've got to get better people in Oakville, you've got to get better people in Toronto, you've got to get better people in LA maybe. And we've always said, you know, we're staying right here, this is where we're founded, this is where we live, and, you know, over 90% of our work, of our team members are located in Niagara Falls. So we're proud and happy to be here, and thanks to the city and the council for its recognition. God bless you.
Next up, Mike LaCoco. Mike, come on up. This guy's got hands like a plumber, never mind a dentist. I heard my knuckles and my hand crackle. Mike, we're very, very proud. Is your wife with Jackie with you today?
Jackie is home looking after those, getting ready for Christmas.
She's watching you on television, right?
Probably not.
Probably not. Well, Mike began his dental practice in Niagara Falls 50 years ago. His office location has changed over the years, however, Mike's remained a great advocate of keeping his practice in the downtown core. His daycare office is across the street from the post office in the downtown area. Dr. LaCoco has just announced his plans to open up a dental clinic to serve residents and visitors to our community evenings and weekends for emergency dental surgery. We also know that Mike has a strong heart for the arts, and he's played a major role in the theater sector in our community as well. However, this evening, we're celebrating 50 years, his 50-year business anniversary in his dental practice in Niagara Falls. And Mike, on behalf of city council, don't hurt me, on behalf of members of city council, myself, and all of our residents, we want to say congratulations, and let's hope you got a few more years where you can hang out and help us downtown. Love to. Say a few words, Mike?
I'd love to. And not the old people. Well, I'll tell you how I got started. I used to play hockey with our teachers, played at the end of CVI, and we were very, very good hockey players, and our teachers were, they thought they were good hockey players. So we used to dress just like you and I are buddies. I became buddies with my teachers. They go, "LaCoco, what the hell are you doing? You don't study." It's not going to drive truck for my father, no, LaCoco, my daddy took over, it's LaCoco. "So why don't you pick up a book?" I said, "Well, why wouldn't I? Try it." So eventually, I got 90 in MS and 95 in elementary, and I wind up with dentistry. My message is to the young people, never, ever, ever put a cap on what you can achieve, because the world's your oyster. Niagara Falls and Kansas, we got the greatest area in the world, just make it work. We got, we have the greatest city council we've had in a long time, too. I don't know if you know that. But I congratulate the mayor, I think he's wonderful, and the people I see around me, vibrant, sharp, let's get it done. Let's create my 10th day.
Oh, yeah. Hey, man, John Holder, come on up. Everyone knows that player, Jingle, right? All of us remember growing up, hearing that song, and I think still, it's such a great popular song. It's one of those brands, one of those songs that are absolutely associated with the brand. It's the jingle that's worked. And John, I'd like to first start by presenting this to you. On behalf of 50 years, and there's some pictures, as you can see, there's John, is that you, John feeding the bear?
That's right.
And then there, is that you brushing your teeth?
No.
Wow, look at that. And Mike, where's Mike? Did he leave already, Mike LaCoco? Did you ever work on that guy? John Holder arrived in Canada from his native Slovenia in 1956. He worked as a farm laborer in construction and on shipyards all the while, saving his money to finance his dream of one day owning a theme park. In 1961, using $2,000 he had saved from working at various jobs, Holder leased a small parcel of land, built two pools for sea lions, and charged a 25-cent entrance into Niagara Game Farm. And from these humble beginnings, Marineland was born. Interaction with animals came from the early years with a petting zoo. Within a few years, marine attractions were added, and the park's name was changed. By 1966, it was officially Marineland and Game Farm, and in the 80s, rides were added to the park. Today, Marineland is one of the largest and most diverse theme parks in North America, featuring attractions like dolphins, walrus, sea lion shows, Friendship Cove, Killer Whale Habitat, Dragon Mountain, the world's largest steel roller coaster, and other amusement. In 2004, Holder unveiled another signature attraction for the park, the world's highest triple tower ride, Sky Screamer, which takes riders skyward for a thrilling ride and a spectacular view of the falls and the surrounding landscape. Have you been on that ride, John?
No.
No. Are you crazy? New rides and family attractions have been added consistently through the 2003 to 2010 seasons. Marineland Properties cover over 1,000 acres in Niagara Falls, employs 75 full-time, 500 seasonal employees, and future plans for the park include the addition of a four-kilometer wilderness adventure ride and a four-kilometer train ride, where guests will be able to view a variety of animals in natural settings. And I'm sure I'm not the only one that's been there many, many times as a child, and now it's been giving me great pleasure to come there with my kids. You know, I've had all three kids, been there for the day, and it's one of those things that you look back and you have family memories, and we're lucky because we don't have to drive out of town to go to such a great place like Marineland. And John's been here creating all these jobs, all these years, and he's been absolutely successful. He's mastered the art of marketing. He's mastered the art of marketing on television, and it's evident by how packed that park is, how full the parking lot is, and how successful his business has been. So, on behalf of myself and all the members of city council, John, we want to say thank you, thank you to you and your lovely wife, and for all those years of being committed to Niagara Falls, creating all those jobs and all that economic activity, and bringing all those millions of people here to Niagara Falls, we want to present you with that plaque and say thank you and congratulations.
Well, I'm not a very good talker and better doer, but I've been spending back all my life here in Niagara Falls, and I'm very proud to be part of the city, community. And I still got a lot of science to continue, and I need support from the city for things like traffic, those things like that, that whenever you generate traffic, you know, you have to provide ways in and out for the visitors to come easy, come and go. And that affects the entire city. And I feel that our people in Marineland is enjoying, the people spend longer in the park, and I'm hoping to turn into a two-day park, probably in the next three or four years. And this is where the entire community is the bigger beneficiary than me because when the people spend overnight in the city, we have to provide them with the accommodation, with the food, other attractions, and it is a very positive for the entire community. So, the secret in this business is we all have to work together because if we don't work together, we will not achieve what we could achieve because we are all beneficiaries from those that become visitors. And as I say, I'm not a very good talker.
Hey, that was very welcomed by a master entrepreneur. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, hold on, John. I can't start talking to you.
Thank you, your worship. I've had the opportunity of knowing Holder almost all my life, and the one thing that sets Mr. Holder apart from most of the other operators in town, not only does he own and operate Marineland, but he's hands-on, and he's built the place almost entirely by himself, overseeing every part of the construction of Marineland, which is a unique situation no matter what business you compare him to.
Thank you very much. All right, now, we're looking for the Schneiders. We've got George and Diane Schneider, come on up. Now, it's ironic, we have the Trabucos up here already with Art Craft, and here's their, one of their longest-serving customers. And I don't need to tell anyone about the quality of a Schneider-built home. I don't know how many times I read the real estate magazine, and that's one of the ways you grab extra points for selling a house, and you say, "Boy, it was a Schneider belt." And you know that, that's one of the selling features, it's got one of that, the stain quality, you know, when you buy a house that's been built by Schneider, you know you're getting sound quality and workmanship. In 1951, George Schneider Sr. built his first home with the help of only one assistant. The Niagara Falls home set the standard for all of which that were followed in Niagara Falls. Remaining true to European traditional craftsmanship, combined with personal pride and attention to every detail of design, material, construction, and customer service, is what served Schneider Construction for the past 60 years in Niagara Falls. For 38 years, George Schneider Jr. has continued the strong family tradition of superior quality home construction that his father started 60 years ago. George and his business partner and wife, Diane, dedicated to working with their customers to make the process of building their dream home more enjoyable. We want to say on behalf of myself and all the members of council, we know that your parents are very, very proud of the tradition that you continue, and all the people that get snuggled and tucked away in their warm cozy houses every night, and they feel comfortable and cozy, they know it's because Schneider's and all their efforts. So, on behalf of myself and all the members of council, and all the residents, we want to say thank you and congratulations.
Diane and I would, first of all, like to appreciate the entire community and how they've supported us over the years. First of all, I need to mention that my father started all this, and it's been a lot of years, and we appreciate everything that he did in the beginning. And it's interesting tonight that there's a lot of people here that supported us through the years. We've done business with Art Craft, as mentioned. Ed and Ruth Van Nuisthey are here tonight. We finally finished their Patterson Funeral Home. Mr. Jane, we built Mr. Jane's house. Mayor Jim, we built a family house as well. And that's how Niagara Falls is. Niagara Falls has supported us and the rest of the community in all these businesses through the years. Thank you.
And I just want to add to that, my dad, he built, you know, my dad's house, too. And it was funny, years later, my dad would have a question, he'd call George, and George would show up. And I'd go, "Dad, can't keep calling him all these 20 years later?" But that's the way George is, and he comes back, and he still works with him on anything that he wants to do. And that's the kind of quality, it's not one of those bumper warranties, right? When you see the bumper, that's the end of the warranty. They're there for the life of the house, literally, and that's the kind of quality we have. So, we're proud to have them in our community. Congratulations. And yes, it was mentioned about Patterson Funeral Home, 100 years, and here's the irony, they just had this huge expansion, and you see how this is working, how community works together, and of course, who led the construction while it was done by the Schneider family. So, I'd like to call up Ed and Ruth Van Nuisthey to come and join us, and Patterson? Come on up.
Don't kiss me, I'm not kissing you. All right, Ed, can I have that? Can I have that to you? I'm going to read the nice words that you wrote for me. That wasn't just a joke, that's okay. Oh, yeah, oh. Brendan?
We'd like to welcome the Nuisthey and Patterson families here, and I'm going to read a little bio on the last 100 years, and you'll see there's some really neat pictures of what it used to look like, I guess, at one time, back in the day. Patterson Family is a long-traditional funeral service in Niagara spanning several generations. In 1911, John Joseph JJ and Annie Patterson purchased the Cornmiller Furniture and Undertaking Business established 1874, located on Main Street in Welland, Ontario. Francis Patterson, the third generation of the Patterson family, purchased the Dermody and Hockton Funeral Home in 1974, located 6062 Main Street in Niagara Falls, and renamed it Patterson Funeral Home. In 1997, Ruth Ann, the fourth generation of the Patterson family, and her husband, my friend Ed Nuisthey, carried on the family tradition, becoming the operators. Patterson Funeral Home completed a very major expansion, if you haven't had a chance to see, it's absolutely beautiful, enervation on their main street business this year to sustain a new generation of quality funeral services while respecting the heritage of the Drummondville district. It seemed appropriate tonight that we honor Schneider Construction as well, as they were the lead on the construction. Leading by example in the district, Ruth Ann has taken an active role in her position as the Main and Ferry BIA Chair for the past several years, and you'll see the beautiful work that's gone on on Main and Ferry. If you haven't been there lately, take a drive, and there's no question, it involves a lot of people, a lot of hands, but also a lot of leadership, and Ruth Ann has been providing that leadership in that area and deserves a lot of accolades. And she, together with her partners in the BIA, are working with the local government and the private sector to revitalize historic Drummondville. And Ed, also very involved in the community, is a trustee, former chair of the Niagara Catholic Fort of Education, and Ed and I go back, and I remember volunteering on the YNCA board back when it was on Fourth Avenue back in the day with Ed. And I can tell you, the roots of volunteerism in our community go very, very deep, and they're very caring for our community. As a matter of fact, last night, they had their regular yearly service for all members that were deceased in the last year. And I know that it's a very emotional thing for a lot of people, and helps give them closure when they can come together and gather as a community and pay respect and spend some time together reflecting on those that aren't with us anymore. So, on behalf of myself and all of council, and everyone here, and all the lives that have been touched by the Patterson and Nuisthey families, we want to say thank you for the last 100 years, congratulations on your expansion, and hopefully, I don't have to be a customer too, too soon. So, congratulations.
Thank you, your worship. You like to want to call him that?
Yeah, I do.
By the way, you get a free make over dinner.
Keep smiling.
I'm smiling. You gotta lay down though for me to do it. I just want to say on behalf of my family, how very pleased we are and honored that this city would give us this citation here this evening. And it's been alluded to on a few occasions, it's great that so many of our friends are here with us. Dr. Mike, who was my first dentist, and the reason I don't wear braces today. Tony Pika, who's sitting in the back, and Tony is our insurance broker, and don't worry, the premium's in the mail, Tony. We'll get that to you. Of course, the Trabucos, who have built several kitchens for us, and George and Diane Schneider, 60 years, and I'm proud to say they spent four of them working on the funeral home. And they've done a good job. But on behalf of my family, we're very honored, and thank you so much for the presentation.
Kind of like a wonderful life around here, you know, everybody's kind of connected somehow to everyone else. Fitting that we would have this around Christmas time. And I've got my Christmas tie, see my Christmas tie? You like that? Yeah? Can you zoom in on that? Where's the camera? Why zoom in on that? My, and the mist my kid, I'm more proud of, my daughter got for me, so she's all excited that I'm wearing her Santa Claus pin. Last up, 125 years of service, and this closes out our service awards here tonight at council. I would call up, and of course, we're talking about Candada Merritt and Company Insurance Brokers. I understand tonight, we have Tony Pika. Tony, you're here to represent them, if we give you your plaque?
125 years.
You look good for 125. I can't wait to hear how he's involved with all the companies here. Tony, on behalf of Amadeo and Eva Candada, we want to say, we're very happy for you, congratulations, and I'm going to read a few words that are prepared first. Richard Coulson Insurance, the original company, was founded in Niagara Falls on Erie Avenue 125 years ago. The company has changed hands several times over the years. It was acquired by Candada Merritt and Company Insurance Brokers in 2011. Today, Candada Merritt is the composite of 27 former insurance brokerages and located in seven communities. Insurance brokers assist their clients with auto, home, life, and business insurance. Is that a little bit of a commercial there? Whooping that enough? This evening, and only now, if you book right now, this evening, Tony Pika is representing the Partnership Ownership Group. I understand that Amadeo and Eva are not able to attend, but I did have the opportunity of seeing them at their office, where we have the ribbon cutting for the opening, and then again for the 125th anniversary just a couple of weeks ago. Amadeo Candada, president of the business, also serves in a volunteer role as the president of the Niagara Falls and Ontario Insurance Brokers Association for the past 10 years. The partners sponsor a variety of local sports teams, excuse me, and they've donated to many of our Niagara foundations, Project Share, the Riverhawk Junior Sea Hockey Team, Stanford Center Volunteer Firefighters Association, Hart Niagara, the Greater Niagara General Hospital Association, Foundation, just to name a few. Very active in our community, and I think, just by what we hear tonight, it's very important to be successful, that you engage and be active in your community. Candada Merritt and Company Insurance Brokers Inc. have set their goals high, committed to moving forward with more technology that will make them more environmentally responsible and fully green by the year 2012, which is a great initiative and always moving forward. And on behalf of myself and council, we want to say congratulations, Tony, and continued success for you and your company.
Thank you. Amadeo and Eva, I know are watching this in satellite in Costa Rica by the pool. So, on behalf of them, thank you very much. Yes, 125 years. Like you said, it's, we've acquired 27 companies to generate 125 years. Bart Davis was, contributed to one of the 27 companies and allowed us to become 125 years. We'd like to thank our past staff and our present staff for their dedication to the company, and we also like to thank our customers and our clients for entrusting us with the insurance.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, yes, Tom to me.
Just want to let you know that I worked there for 45 years, and a lot of people thought I was the founder. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, next up, Legacy Project is our next deputation. We've got Gord West and Don Jackson, Niagara Falls Museum Advisory Board, will update council on the Legacy Project.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening, your worship and council. Thank you for having us. It certainly is nice to be surrounded by this much history behind me. I'm still walking, it isn't often, the history that I'm surrounded with is still moving. The War of 1812, bicentennial years, 2012, 13, and 14 are soon upon us. We are here tonight to update council, as we have promised you in the past to do so, and also city residents, on the activities that have been taking place in Niagara Falls over the last several years as we prepare to celebrate the results of that conflict, 200 years of peace between two of the greatest nations in the world, Canada, of course, first, and then the United States. The largest single activity in Niagara Falls has been the Lundys Lane Battlefield Legacy Project, which was approved by council in June of 2008, and had been planned in the planning for several years before then. This $12 million project, funded by federal, provincial, and municipal levels of government, as well as private fundraising by the museum's advisory board, is the largest single bicentennial capital project in the Niagara region. As you can see from the map that's about to come up, this project encompasses a large part of the Lundys Lane Battlefield and has several aspects to it. One, the revitalization and expansion of the Niagara Falls History Museum, which is in the middle of the Main and Ferry revitalization, spearheaded by Ruth Ann. Number two, the construction of the gateway walkway over Lundys Lane to join two sides of the battlefield, currently bisected by an extremely busy four-lane roadway, and to provide safe passage for our visitors over this roadway. Number three is the property redevelopment on the battlefield for increased pedestrian access, parking, and open space. Four is improvement and refurbishing of the Battleground Hotel Museum. And five, improvements to the current trail system, including interpretive signage and improved access to all of those areas. We are pleased to report that the revitalization and expansion of the Niagara Falls History Museum is more than 95% complete. An artist's rendering that you have in front of you and will shortly be handed over to the city. We have a key, but we haven't had it officially handed to the city yet. The four- to six-month period of building and installing the new exhibits will begin in the new year, and the grand opening of the new museum will take place on July 21st, 2012. In keeping with Niagara Falls' reputation as a world-class destination, this building will be a world-class museum facility, and of which residents and visitors alike can truly be proud. For those who have not had an opportunity to visit the building during the construction period, the following slides will give you an indication of what you can expect to see when you get there. This is, that was the outdoor classroom at the back of the building. Here, the first floor, at the top, the Gale Family War of 1812 Visitor Center, the Fallview Casino Resort Visitor Services. This is the gallery from the floor level. This is the gallery from the floor level. Including the Fallview Casino Resort Visitor Services will include the admissions area, a gift shop, a float room, donor recognition wall, and other things that will tell you what is going on in the building. The Ontario Power Generation Temporary Exhibit Gallery on the first floor. The Theater and Programming Room, which will have several uses, with removable stage and chairs. And my favorite room, which is the West Family Atrium. Here again, we have the 1812 Gallery, a representation of what it will look like as you walk through into the first of the rooms that we go to. As you see on the left is a cannon that has been promised us by the Royal Armory in Great Britain. It is, a period cannon was used throughout the period of 1812 and will hold a special place in our hearts and in the gallery. This is a shot from above. There's an opening from the community gallery above and you'll be able to look down into the Gale Family War of 1812 gallery. This is the atrium, which is the area that joins the old building with the new. There will be entrances of both front and back and a bridge that will join the second floor. The second floor itself, the Walker Industries Research Room, it's a public research library, including the Campbell Family War of 1812 collection. And on the left, you see the Niagara Falls Community Gallery, which will hold the community and Falls exhibits. Here it is, an artist's rendering of what the gallery will look like from the north side of the building and from the south side of the building. In the basement, there will be storage, collection storage, which is something that we've never had in this size before, including specially-built storage spaces. There will be a workshop where the staff will be able to use the equipment to produce new exhibits for us. The following pictures are of the construction itself, the front of the building, from the west side facing the new building. This is a shot of the old building with the Victoria Monument and the new building in the background. That's okay. We need to back up one, Don, do you?
One more. One more.
I'm, okay. And Don will carry on from here. Don?
Mr. Mayor, councilor's staff, ladies and gentlemen, can you go back one, please, Dean?
I'm not even touching it.
Oh, I know what happened. I touched the mouse.
Don't touch the mouse. Only I can press the mouse.
There are rules in city council that I didn't understand. In spite of all the progress that you just saw, and believe me, this is an incredible building. It's very exciting to go there and to try and remember what it was like before all of this activity started way back in 2007, 2008. Phase one, the building of the new museum is almost complete. Phases two and three are in various stages of development. Certainly, the bridge over Lundys Lane must be built to physically join the two sides of the battlefield, which are bisected, as we all know, by the extremely busy roadway Lundys Lane. This bridge is going to provide safe passage between the Drummond Hill Cemetery and the Battleground Hotel Museum. The EA process, I think you are aware, you approved this process some time ago. It is nearing completion and early in the new year, its recommendations will be coming before council for consideration. Improvements to the current battlefield trail system are necessary, including interpretive signing, very similar to that which has already been installed in the historic Drummond Hill area. For those of you who haven't seen those wonderful storyboards, there are four of them that are already installed, three of them on Main Street, one on Ferry Street, and they really begin to tell the story of what wonderful things are happening in that particular area. Planning is currently underway for improvements to the Battleground Hotel Museum, which is located in the Redmond Heights area, which this council made absolutely certain was preserved for future generations for public use. We're very cautiously optimistic that these outstanding phases of the project will be able to be completed according to the original schedule and in time for the start of the War of 1812 bicentennial celebrations. And before we go on to the next one.
My fault, sir.
All right. I just want to make sure that you are aware of the float that the museum board and that the task force have had in the Canada Day Parade and in the Christmas Santa Claus Parade. That particular float is symbolic of what we're talking about here, particularly in phase two. It's an exact replica of the Rainbow Bridge. And it does very symbolically point to the 200 years of peace that have been between the two great nations that are joined by that bridge. We plan to change that float each time it goes out and we will be in as many parades as possible until the bicentennial celebrations are over in 2015. The bicentennial task force, which is a committee that was approved by this council, has been meeting very regularly to plan a variety of activities for the bicentennial years. There are similar committees in almost every municipality in the Niagara region and we have a regional legacy council, which has taken on a coordinating role in connection with the events which will be taking place across our region. I want to highlight two or three of these events because they're really quite unique to Niagara Falls and they're actually quite unique to the political landscape. The first one in January, on January the 14th, 2012, is the New Year's Levy, which will take place at the Gale Center and which will be a combined levy of both the municipality represented by Mayor Di, Mayor DiDadi, by our MP, Tim Crater, and by our MTP, Rob Nicholson. All three will be in attendance at that levy and I think that's pretty exciting to look forward to. The Great Niagara Portage Adventure, you've set up a bunch of bowling teams here. Well, let me quickly tell you about the Great Niagara Portage Adventure. On June the 9th, we will be having an adventure where teams of four, minimum of four up to eight, will be dressing in period costume, will be carrying a canoe, and will be traveling part of the original portage rote. The rote that they will take is very similar to the Terry Fox one of last year. And we're looking forward to having these individuals walking the streets of Niagara Falls in period costume as well as carrying canoes. Chime the bells for 1812 at Christchurch. They are making sure that their equipment is updated to the point where they will have a presentation on June 16th, 2012. And of course, in addition to the commemoration services which are held yearly, the big event, and it's a signature event in the whole region, is the grand opening of the Niagara Falls History Museum, which is scheduled for July 21st, 2012. Please put that on your BlackBerry right now. There are a number of ways in which you can help. One of them would be to change the slide. Thank you. This is an exciting project. You know, it's something really grand for this city. It's a piece of infrastructure that has been, we have been waiting for for a long time and it will be here. Share that excitement. Participate in the annual cemetery tours. And these tours are actually going to be expanded this year as a result of some federal money that was made available. Go to the grand opening. Volunteer to assist with the planned major event. Niagara Falls is a great municipality for having people volunteer and this is another opportunity to do that. There will be a number of activities that will take place. I've mentioned those for 1812. There are many more being planned for 2013 and beyond. Remember that 2014, July 25th of 2014, is the big day for the city of Niagara Falls for that was the 200th anniversary of the Battle of Lundys Lane. For people around the table in the audience watching on Kojiko, plan an event and have 1812 theme incorporated into it. And of course, in my role with the committee, I couldn't miss an opportunity to suggest that as a group or as an individual, help us to reach our fundraising goal through a financial contribution. Remember that the museum's advisory board committed to raise $2 million of the total cost of this project. We are now up to 1.2 million and still climbing. There are still a few very exciting naming opportunities that are available and I hope that the businesses that were recognized tonight will perhaps consider participating in those opportunities. All donations, $100 or more are on the donor board in the new atrium. So please, everyone, take advantage of this opportunity to leave your personal legacy because that's what the museum is doing, pointing out legacy or the memory of a loved one by participating in this fundraising opportunity. And yes, this is the end, but the picture itself is intended to leave you with an impression of what it must have been like 200 years ago when all of those people fought to contribute to what we now know as the great city of Niagara Falls in the great country of Canada. Thanks very much. If there are any questions, we'd be glad to ask and I'll be glad to, you know, walk around, pass the hat if you'd like.
Looks like some of our council meetings. Was there any questions or comments for Don Jackson or for Gord West from the council? If you had a chance, it's really taking shape. It looks to be really, really nice.
If anyone wants to come at any time, we'll be very pleased to show you around. You will be excited once you get in there.
One thing you left O2 is the New Year's Levy. We're going to be dressed in period costume.
Correct.
So we're going to be dressed the way they did 200 years ago, so that should be interesting.
And General Drummond will be there.
Yes, yes.
He won't even have to go and buy anything.
Counselor Peter Angel said, "I won't even have to go and buy anything." That's great. Thank you. Good one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Gord. Appreciate that. Okay, first up here, Chippewa Polar Bear Dip. Oh, we're gonna, the clerk has something to say first. Yes, Mr. Ira Fida.
Yeah, I received a call today from Ben Newell, who's one of the event organizers. They are not going to be here this evening, although I don't know, Shirley's here, maybe she's going to speak. I guess they're still working on the organization of this. Obviously, these polar bear dips take place on New Year's Day. I know they're working with staff, but it looks like we do have some people here who will speak to the event anyway, so I'll hand it over to them.
Welcome, Shirley Fisher. Yeah, are you gonna, you're gonna lead us here today or are you gonna lead us to the polar bear dip?
In song.
Lead us, yes, you're in song.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I don't think Dan and I knew that this was canceled. As far as we knew, it was still on tonight and we wondered where everybody was, so we'll kind of just wing it if it's all right with you. Yes, the polar bear dip is going to be January the 7th.
Change the date.
Yes.
January 7th.
The 7th. That's Dan's birthday. That's why we're doing it because he's gonna be first in the water and he'll be at the boat ramp. So Dan, you go ahead and carry it on.
Yes, unfortunately, Ben couldn't be here. My name's Dan Tibbs. I'm a 35-year veteran with the Niagara Regional Police Service. The last time I was here was about bringing in the docks to the community of Chippewa and we had the backing of council and we really appreciate what you've done for us. Those docks went back in and I don't have the advantage here of having all the IT, but I want you to paint a picture in your mind of the kids floating in the river and having fun, the boats going up and down. It was a great season we had this last summer and it was because of you. Wayne Thompson has been attending most of our meetings. We meet every Tuesday at the Boat House in Chippewa. We're growing as an organization. I'm a resident of Niagara Falls, but I live in Chippewa and I'm proud to be a person who lives in Chippewa. And that's what we're trying to do is we're trying to create a community feeling in Chippewa. And so we have a lot of things we want to do. One of the things we're starting out with in the new year is this new polar bear swim. And we have the MIAC group, your organization with the youth organization, and Corey Weidick, who's the constable for the Niagara Regional Police, has been working with that group. And I understand that they're going to be working with us in putting together the polar bear swim. The reason why we chose the particular spot there is because they can keep their feet on the ground all the time, whereas at the docks that you helped us put in, they would be going into deep water there. We have the Niagara Falls Volunteer Fire Department is going to be assisting us with their boats and with safety personnel. And we have the St. John's ambulance is going to be there with their ambulance and I believe floor personnel. And Ben, who's Tim Horton, is going to be supplying them with free donuts and food and drinks. So what we're trying to do is to just really develop the community of Chippewa. So we also know that you've agreed with us in a partnership and that we're going to be developing new docks that are going in beside the Tim Hortons this year coming. And that's a great event that we're looking forward to. There's a lot of other things that we're going to be doing in the community of Chippewa. So this is really rolled from being just bringing back the old docks. We really want to now develop and continue on with the community efforts of Chippewa. So we appreciate your backing us on this and we're hoping to see you all in your Speedos January 7th at 11:00 a.m. And we hope to have a good gathering, be professional photographers there. We want to make up, excuse, we can't get the MIAC group to make up some floating icebergs of different materials and things and get a good event down there.
Thank you very much, Dan. And I assume Shirley, you're going to be jumping in in your swimsuit?
Absolutely. And so is one of our board of directors, Counselor Thompson.
Oh.
He will be there, yes. And he is a board of director on our committee. We also have a dance planned. We have our race, our five-click race again this year. We have many events planned, they're just not confirmed, so you're going to see us here quite often, aren't you?
There is another one confirmed and it's an 1812 breakfast at the Chippewa Arena. It's on March the 11th at 9:00 a.m. and it's going to be with the Volunteer Fire Department again. And we'll be talking about that later on because that's not what I'm here for, but we'll be bringing that up in, I just want to get across what an important thing we're trying to do in Chippewa and bring up that feeling of a community.
Well, thank you. We've got Counselor Thompson would like to color?
Yeah, I just want to compliment the group that are working in Chippewa. This is just one of probably a dozen events that are going to happen over the next while. And they are committed totally initially, putting up this dock at no cost to the municipality. They are working diligently. They're meeting, as I said, every Tuesday morning. There's a lot of people involved. Jay Mason has been leading the pack and I just want to say it's kind of a pleasure to sit there and see this group working towards a community project. And this is just the first one that they've set their sights on and it's going to be a committee that is going to really look at doing special, unique, and different and progressive things for the village of Chippewa and the city of Niagara Falls. So congratulations. And when I was at City Hall, I participated in those things and I think- And when I was at City Hall, I participated in those things, and I think they want to issue a challenge tonight to have the mayor participate in the polar bear event on January seventh. And I think that that should be a personal challenge to him, and I'm sure that he will accept that as his responsibility as mayor of the city.
I would love to go hand in hand with Counselor Thompson into the Chippewa trip. So long as he doesn't wear that white Speedo of his, we'll be okay.
I'd be okay to see him.
I think many would.
You do realize that's being televised, so, you know, we'll keep you to it.
Yes, absolutely. Well, there might be some shrinkage issues that day, but we will.
Lots of it.
Counselor, do we have a, we've got a report here before the council. Do we, Counselor Thompson moves the report, second by Counselor Maves. Discussion on the report? All those in favor? Oh, wait a minute, Counselor Thompson got to complete.
The one thing that we're really here for is to invite the public to come and invite the public to participate. This is a fundraiser for the dock.
January the seventh, Dan's birthday. Everybody be there. Counselor Thompson and his white Speedo, you don't want to miss it. All right, we'll mark it down. Okay, we're going to call the vote? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think on the last note, the important thing is to make everyone aware that in Chippewa, we're moving forward to make a beautiful community with special events now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Shirley. And Dan, thank you. Okay, next up, we've got Planning Matter PD twenty eleven dash eighty-eight. I would ask City Clerk to introduce this next item.
Your worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to permit a cottage rental dwelling at forty eighty Hickson Avenue. Somewhere I've got the notification sheet. Notice, notification was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, November eleventh, two thousand and eleven, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign and chief outside the council chamber.
Thank you. I'd ask Mr. Hurlovich, our Director of Planning, to explain the purpose and the reason.
Thank you, your worship. The photograph in front of you is the property in question. It's a small house located at the corner of Hickson and Leader Lane. The, the property is outlined in blue on the slide in front of you, as I mentioned, is a corner property. To the north of the property is a city park. North of the park is the Great Wolf Lodge. Further to kind of the northeast is the, is River Road, the Niagara River Parkway and the gorge. To the, immediately to the east is an apartment building. To the south, there are a number of detached dwellings. And across the street from this property is a triplex. So you can see it's quite a diverse neighborhood. The property is currently zoned R two, single and two-family zone. The bylaw amendment is being requested to add a cottage rental dwelling as a use to the property. It's currently being used as that, although it's contrary to the zoning bylaw. The amendment is to add those as well as some site-specific conditions. This is the site plan of the property, so you can see the house. It's the hatched property or building outlined in red. You saw the slide at the beginning, so there's a lawn in front and a rear yard, typical of a residential dwelling in that neighborhood, a driveway along the north side of the property. They are looking for a number of site-specific provisions in addition to adding the cottage rental use. These reflect existing conditions. So the exterior side yard is currently three and a half meters rather than four and a half, as the bylaw requires. The lot area is three thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet rather than the three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two square feet required by the bylaw. The front yard setback from Hickson is three point four meters rather than six meters as required by the bylaw. And they also applied for, to allow for a bedroom in the cellar area. At the time this application was submitted, that was a prohibition in our bylaws, no longer the case. We did hold a neighborhood meeting with the residents in the area on November the eighth. We did have a neighbor in attendance as well as the agent for the applicant. There was, the neighbor basically noted a number of disturbances largely caused by noise emanating from some of the occupants who on occasion were using this rental dwelling. The applicant has stated that they're taking, have taken steps to control the guest behavior. They will be licensed once we go through the zoning, and they'll be expected to comply with the noise bylaw. The applicant has also offered to provide some additional fencing and trees on the site to help mitigate some of those issues. The property is designated residential in the official plan. The predominant use is intended to be for dwellings. However, those policies do provide for ancillary uses such as bed and breakfast establishments where they are compatible. The, as well, the, we have policies that regulate the location size of the property depending on traffic that they generate in order to minimize the disturbances. The, we have found that the proposal does comply. The cottage rental dwelling is a form of short-term accommodation similar to the bed and breakfast establishment. The site is located on the periphery of the residential neighborhood, close proximity to Great Wolf Lodge, a large tourist facility. It has direct access to Victoria Avenue, the Leader Lane, and the use is intended to be small in scale and is intended to provide short-term stays for visitors. The residential character will be maintained. There's no external changes proposed to the building. The rental dwelling will be rented to a single group of travelers as required by the bylaw. We are recommending that the number of bedrooms be limited to three, although the applicant applied for four bedrooms for occupancy. The building code restricts occupancy of bedrooms to two persons per room, and so therefore it would be a maximal occupancy of six persons that would be put into the bylaw. The, as well, we do these on a site-by-site basis, so this isn't an as-of-right use in order that we can review every application of cottage rental. There are two other cottage rental units in the Glenview neighborhood. They're located on Ferguson Street closer to River Road. Therefore, we don't believe there's an undue concentration of cottage rental. I mentioned the existing zoning is R two, permits singles, detached, semi-detached, and duplex dwellings. The application is to add the cottage rental dwelling, so they will retain the R two zoning. They will, again, have the right to be a single detached, semi-detached duplex or a cottage rental unit. They've applied for four bedrooms, as I mentioned, and I've already been through the site-specific provisions. And one of the provisions was to allow for the bedroom in the cellar area that's no longer necessary. The, there is one bedroom on the first floor, two on the second floor, and one in the cellar area of the building. As I mentioned, we're recommending that this be limited to three bedrooms. The bedroom in the basement doesn't satisfy the Ontario Building Code requirements for a bedroom there, the, in terms of the size of the window opening and escape. The licensing bylaw also does not allow guest rooms to be located in a basement or a cellar area. So because of those two areas, we're not recommending that room be allowed for occupancy. I already mentioned the building code restricts bedrooms to two persons per room, and therefore we think those recommended limits would assist in ensuring that the cottage rental dwelling remains small in scale and is compatible with the surrounding residences. Excuse me, once the buy, or the use is added, we can require that they come in and get their license for the cottage rental unit. They will be required to comply with those licensing requirements, and the, certainly they'll be expected to comply with the other aspects of city bylaws, including the noise bylaw. So therefore, we have found that the proposed use is similar to a bed and breakfast, which is permitted in residential areas. It is compatible with the neighborhood, generally compatible with the Glenview neighborhood, which, as I pointed out, includes Great Wolf Lodge, a number of other tourist facilities, has direct access to Victoria Avenue along Leader Lane. There are no changes proposed to the building, and we can regulate the use through the licensing and enforcement offices in the city. Therefore, planning staff has recommended that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment application to allow the existing single-family dwelling to be used as a cottage rental dwelling, but to limit the maximum number of rooms to three bedrooms. Those are the highlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. Are there any questions in the council, Mr. Hurlovich? Okay, saying none. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referrals that are received. Failure to sign the sign and chief will result in staff rejecting an appeal after section thirty-four nineteen of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Does anyone here others? Yes, ma'am, you'd like to sit, step forward, please? Accept the mic and state your name and your address, please.
Am I able to bring my computer, my laptop, or do I have internet access on this screen?
That's a good question, Mr. Clerk. You have something on a jump drive, or?
I have a lot, I forwarded a lot of things to my Gmail. I figured it would be easier access to show you everything, because I have quite a bit to say.
We have internet right there, oh.
If you could get onto Gmail, and do I have, can I?
I don't know. I'll have to ask the clerk how.
I guess I could start off by saying my name is Veronica Veal, and I am living at forty ninety Hickson, which is the property immediately adjacent south to the property in question.
You mean to get on Gmail?
Gmail. Perfect. Wonderful. Perfect. Okay, well, I'll start now. Actually, Gmail's changed their format a little bit, I've noticed. There we go. Perfect. Okay. I have to say that the property next door to me, the forty eighty, was originally purchased by Great Wolf Lodge from my neighbors Charlie and Sue Boudreau. They also purchased another property on Browden, which faces the park, faces Great Wolf Lodge. They renovated and renovated, and renovated and rented to numerous tourist groups back then, and it was the applicants, the current applicants that were running it. They've taken ownership of the property, forty eighty, at the beginning of this year. This cottage rental business has been operating for the past five years without licensing or permit and in violation of zoning bylaws and noise and over occupancy bylaws. Actually, if it's at all possible, at some point in time, I would also like to refer to another website, because they have their properties listed on homeaway.com, where the general public can, this is how they've managed to acquire their clients. Well, while some groups of tourists and people that visit the property are quiet and pleasant, and I don't even notice they're around, most of them can be very noisy and rude. Across the street and behind me, my neighbors are not as affected by this, because they are not in the close proximity that I am. I hear everything that goes on there, and I wouldn't wish the situation on anybody. I also don't want to sell my house, leaving a legacy of tourists as neighbors. I requested assistance from City, the City Hall Clerk's Office after making numerous complaints over the past five years to police, and the odd complaint to City Hall, and it seemed that whenever a complaint was made, nicer groups of people would come in, it would be quiet again, and things would look like it would be a normal residential neighborhood again, and then all of a sudden, all it would take is one large group of people. And when I say large group, sometimes up to twenty people, thirty people can be next door having a party. It's very frustrating when you're trying to sleep. The first five years that they started to operate, I was on night shift. So granted, I wasn't at home for a majority of the noise. Over the past few years, I'm back onto a day shift, and I pretty much hear everything. I used to have a dog. She passed away last year. So any of the noise that went, would go on next door, if the dog barked, she would hear pretty much a mouse probably scattering across the lawn. I'd let it go, because I just figured, okay, it's just a dog. Well, over the past year, without my dog, the noise is quite loud, and the houses are very close together. I have requested, you know, I was indicated to me at the neighborhood meeting, the open house meeting, that there are other cottage rental dwellings in Niagara Falls, and I automatically assumed they would all be located in the River Road region. It would make sense. That's where all the bed and breakfasts are. Some of the bed and breakfasts and the cottage rentals are a little bit further up from River Road, but still considered in the same area. It has, seems to be that to market these properties, they have included that Great Wolf Lodge is a stone's throw away from the property. Great Wolf Lodge is well over six hundred feet away from the property. I challenge anyone, if anyone can throw a stone and actually hit Great Wolf, I will drop my complaints and say, sure, go ahead. But it's, we're close to other things as well. And I am not disturbed by the events of Great Wolf. I'm not disturbed by the triplex across the street. I'm not disturbed by the neighbor, the nine-unit apartment building behind me. We're residents. We all live there. However, it is usually me who hears it, and I have to go outside and say to the, my tourist neighbors, hi, I live next door. You may not be aware this is a residential neighborhood. I'm trying to sleep now. Would you mind keeping it down? Like you would if your neighbors were throwing a party and you might have to call the police once in a while. Some are rude and keep going. Some say, sorry. I was, one group actually gave me a bottle of wine to say, we didn't know this was the situation. It isn't posted online that we're in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So of the fifteen, and I don't want to waste any time of the city of the council's time, but I wanted to see where the other cottage rentals were located in Niagara Falls. Of the fifteen approved tourist homes, three of them are not in this immediate area. Two are located on Gerner Road, and one is located on Lundys Lane. No immediate neighbors, no real noise complaint or over occupancy. Nobody really cares if a group of people stay in these, in these areas. The two residences or cottage rentals that are in the Glenview area that were located on Ferguson that were, was mentioned, I would drive by them quite a bit, actually. One of them had a sign posted outside. I think it was called Honeymoon Rental. I've, the sign has come down over the past little bit, and in my research of seeing these different homes, I've knocked on the next-door neighbor and said, hey, are you aware you have a cottage rental next door to you? He said, yes. We've lived here for a year and a half. We've only been here for one summer, and it hasn't been too bad. Pretty quiet, pretty organized. Okay, no problem. She did say, her name's Sarah, she said that, I don't think the owner's involved in the business anymore. I think he's looking to get out. And with the sign coming down and with the different renovations... And with the sign coming down and with the different renovation, maybe he's no longer, it may be zoned, but I don't know if it will continue. I also went, now, the two properties, forty-two eighty-six and forty-two ninety-two. Maybe it might help if I actually looked the screen in front of me. Forgive me, I can't. I'm used to my computer. Page one of fifteen. There, I can't, how do you scroll down? If you don't have, forgive me, I require assistance. What I was going to say is that the majority of the properties that are approved, the two properties on Ferguson are side by side. They're next door to one another.
Which one do you want to hear?
I want to scroll down because I've got more of them in the file. Page one of fifteen of fifteen. And there should be more pages. So the two properties on Ferguson are side by side, so if anybody has a problem next door, well, they're tourists, there's no real issue there with the residence. Likewise, on forty-two twenty-eight Huron and on forty-seven thirty-three Zimmerman, they actually are on the same block as a gigantic bed and breakfast called Villa Gardenia. And they're all located within one another. Again, a tourist block, not necessarily a residential block. Two properties located on forty-nine oh-one Ontario Avenue and forty-nine oh-seven Ontario Avenue, which is just down the street here, again, they are next-door neighbors, side by side. And when I went, stepped out today, I happened to meet Vivian, who lives next door, and she said that they, you know, she's lived there for twenty years, and that they manage the property very well. I'm not going to bother, I didn't bother investigating River Road addresses, only because one would expect to find a cottage rental or a bed and breakfast on River Road. And likewise, on Banfield, right next door to a bed and breakfast, for sale as well. I guess the point I'm trying to make is cottage rentals should be in an area where you would expect to find a cottage rental. I have been living with this for the past four years, not knowing who my neighbors are going to be, not knowing what's going to happen, nervous about leaving the house if there's fifteen people drinking in the backyard, what sort of damage could be done while I'm gone. As a result, I've taken pictures of license plates indicating any time this year that I have been annoyed or upset by noise or large groups of people outside, cabs showing up at ten o'clock at night, whisking away a bunch of loud tourists looking to go to the casino, looking to go to the bar, coming back, cabs, drunk people filing out of taxi cabs. It, I'm a little disappointed in my neighborhood in the fact that they haven't shown up, but at the same time, I can understand why they haven't because they're not living immediately next door to this, and the noise doesn't travel across to them. Perhaps on four or five different occasions, my neighbors will say, hey, you must have been up all night because of that. And I'll say, yes, I am. And I've asked them, when it comes down to finally something getting done about it, I hope you show up. Well, they haven't. Any luck?
No, basically just that page.
Just that page, huh?
Yeah, so I don't know if there's any pictures on that page you want to get to.
If necessary, I could submit everything that I've organized into one giant email, and I can ask for the email addresses of city council members, and you can get this tonight. I hope you, you know, extend any information I need, you know, you need from me. I guess, well, let's see here. I've been, I've been living in that house for, my house for eight and a half years. I work at the casino, and I deal with tourists all day. When I come home, I kind of want to come home. I don't want to have to come home to tourists. With the cab, mention the cabs, music, excess guests, drinking, partying, drugs. The situation is as such where it's very similar where a high school student is going to be going to his graduation, and he goes to a hotel, and he says, hey, sign me up, I'm going to, you know, this is my prom, and twenty people, thirty people will show up to a hotel room to party. This situation is not that much different, and it also lacks a host as a normal bed and breakfast might ordinarily carry. Numerous times, okay, well, this is, I'm citing specifically an example here, the keys to the property are on a lock box on the door handle. Sometimes, groups of people show up, and only one person knows the code. So while they're all standing there waiting for someone to show up, they're urinating at the side of the house. That's one thing that I've seen more than once, maybe three or four times. The fact that I don't have regular neighbors, it remains vacant during the winter season. That's a little unnerving as well. It'd be nice to have somebody in the wintertime around, nice to have neighbors. Until the cleaning staff arrives after a group is left, the property can be absolutely filled with beer bottles and garbage. The other point I wanted to make with me working at the casino, they visit the casino, they've lost their money, they look at me, then they go home to their tourist home, and I'm their neighbor. Not an easy feeling or settling feeling. I'm glad I wrote down what I wanted to show on the computer. Since the start of this year, May thirteenth, May fifteenth, May twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth, June second, June seventh, June twelfth, and June thirteenth, June eighteenth, nineteenth, June twenty-ninth, July fifteenth, July twenty-seventh, August second, and September twenty-third are all dates this year that I've been inconvenienced by the goings-on of next door. I respectfully request that city council deny the zoning amendment. I don't know what else I could possibly say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Veal. Are there any questions yet? Counselor Carrion?
Your worship, I'd like the staff to address the one comment she made about this has been operating illegally for five years. I'd like to have that addressed, Your Worship.
Who would, Alex?
Your Worship, it was only brought to our attention this year. We've been working with the owner's agent, who is Rocky Vaca, he'll speak later. So we've been working with them only this year. It was, so it only came to planning as a land use issue this year. She might have called the police in previous years, but the police aren't planning.
I wish to, that's one thing I do wish to bring up as well. With calling the police, I will say about ten times over the past four years, I have called the police. They will come, usually it quiets down. Sometimes I hear the guests kind of laugh them off and say, you know, sorry, we had to waste your time with you coming out here. And I have to agree with them. I don't wish the police to have to come over next door to solve any problems that I'm having. At the start of this year, when I first called in May, I asked, don't you guys have a record of my previous complaints? And they said, no. And I became very upset, and I asked to speak to somebody higher in the police. A staff sergeant got on the phone with me, and he said that a noise complaint ticket that, or a noise complaint that they receive, that they send a unit out for, they issue a noise complaint ticket to the owners of the house. Because the owners are not present at the time of the noise complaint, there is no noise ticket issued, therefore, there is nothing to document. I, that is how the police have been handling this. There have been no records. This is why I, like, something needs to be addressed.
Are there any other questions from council of Mrs. Veal? Yeah, oh, Counselor Gates?
Just real quick. You've mentioned a number of times during your presentation about a bed and breakfast, and you thought, well, River Road and all the other places that have them. And when I take a look at the documentation coming from city staff, they call it a cottage rental dwelling. And obviously, the most bed and breakfast that I understand is that usually the owner's in the building, they cook your breakfast in the morning, they then clean up. So obviously, this is a lot different than a bed and breakfast. And I just want to make sure that the, my fellow counselors are clear on that. So with you saying a bed and breakfast a number of times, it really isn't a traditional bed and breakfast. And the second thing, I agree with Counselor Carrion, that this has gone on for five years and to city staff's comments with us knowing that they're violating the bylaw. So I just wanted to make it clear on what we're really discussing. We're not talking about a bed and breakfast. We're talking really about a rental, cottage rental, that I guess different people come in on the weekend or during the week or whatever, and they would just kind of move. So it's not really a bed and breakfast that I'm aware of.
No, and that's why the proposal's for a cottage rental, and that's what she's saying with a bed and breakfast, there's going to be somebody on hand to monitor the situation. But with a cottage rental, it's a bit of a different, like you said, a lock box, a bit of a different situation. Are there any other que, Counselor, yeah, Counselor, mine?
No questions, just comments. The situation where, when the police are called out, if they don't find owners present, they feel they can't issue a ticket, and therefore, no ticket issued, no documentation. Several years ago, we had a problematic building in my neighborhood, and I suffered very similarly. And I, and we called the cops, we called bylaw, we tried everything to, and it was very frustrating. I finally solved it because I bought the place. That's what it took to clear it up. But, you know, this is not funny. I mean, one of the things I'd like to do a bit later is ask staff to come back with a report on this quandary and how to fix it. The fact that people who are kept awake at night when they have to get up and go to work in the morning, can't sleep because of a noise problem, can't get any help from the police, there's not even any documentation created out of it. I mean, that is really, really frustrating from anybody, for anybody who's suffering like that. So that's one thing. And the other thing is that five years, that's not just five years of suffering for the neighbor, but five years of lost revenues for the city. You know, it really bothers me that it's easier to ask forgiveness and permission, and I don't think we have any penalties in place for establishments that we've kept operating illegally. And by them being able to save the licensing fees that they should have been paying us if they'd done things properly, really, that is an encouragement or a bonus or an incentive for them. You don't pay your licensing fees, then you come up further ahead. And, you know, to me, that does not encourage compliance with our zoning bylaw. I think we need some sort of, something in place to be a disincentive to doing that, something so that if people are caught doing that, they pay much more than they would have paid if they'd gone through the proper channels and obtained the approvals and the licenses they need to pay. So that's something else I'd like to ask for later as well.
I'd like to bring your attention to the fact that the house is advertised on HomeAway.com, with the exception of the Windows Internet Explorer box, that it has four, it's advertised that it has four bedrooms and that it sleeps twelve. Okay?
Do you have any other questions of Ms. Veal from council? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Veal.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else other than the applicant? Other than the applicant? Yes, you'd like to step forward, please? Sure. Can you just state your name and your address, please?
My name's Andrea Furti. I live at four one two four Hickson Avenue. This is my husband Jeremy. We've lived at four one two four Hickson Avenue, so that's kind of right in the middle of the street for six years now. We've owned the property. For a time, my sister and her two little children, six and at a new point up to three years of age, lived with us at our dwelling. And in that timeframe, various times of day and things like that, we've never had any instances of noise or anything like that from, from, you know, from this house and from forty eighty. So where the arrows are on the bottom, we're actually just the dwelling right where it's the detached dwelling sign is. That's where we live on.
Just so we get it clear which one you are.
Forty ninety, it's just off the map.
We're just off the map. So where the detached dwelling sign is, we're actually the house just next door to it. So we're, we're basically dead center in the street. You can see where River Road is.
Yeah, we're down there.
We're right there.
Right there?
Yeah, we're right there. With the nature of the way the land sweeping is and with the escarpment and things like that, there, there is things that, like, everything sort of echoes in and around with the escarpment and things like that. And with that being said, we've never had any noise issues or anything like that. The traffic, since we've lived there, there hasn't been any increased traffic on our street or anything in that nature. It's a very, it is quiet and everything. On the opposite end of, it's not on the map, but there's, there's another apartment building on the opposite end, so.
With a bar right beside it.
With a bar right beside it, and there's more noise from that than from anything else. In the times we've lived there, when we've seen either police, ambulance, or any sort of the public services come to our neighborhood, it's always been to the other end of the street. And, I mean, you live in a neighborhood, you hear a fire, police, you always kind of look at your front door to sort of see where it's going or, or what's going on, just to see what's up in your neighborhood. And I've never noticed police or anything like that at that particular house. We go for walks in the neighborhood all the time, and, you know, every, every so often, you'd see someone sitting on the front porch, go wave and nod to you, you know, whether it's, if they're outside. Just with the park being right there and going to the park, haven't noticed any excessive noise, but I tend to be more of a night owl. So I'm up fairly late into the evenings, and in our backyard, we have a nice patio, and we'll sit out there, and we don't hear anything carrying through the neighborhood. There's, you know, you can hear things from other houses, but nothing that's excessive or anything that would lead me to ever want to complain about the property.
Is there any members of council have any questions for the Fucci's? Yes, yeah, do you want to ask? Do you want to come, if you can come up to the mic, please? Was that chief's name? Okay.
I'm just curious if there's any blood relation between the people that are talking with the applicant.
Okay.
I'm not related. My husband is cousin to the applicant. My sister couldn't be here tonight because she has two children, but she lived in the house as well, and she didn't have any. I would be here, you know, on my own, like, I personally don't have any relation to them.
Okay. Is there any questions of counselors, of the Fucci's? No? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else other than the applicant that would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none. Council now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. Welcome, Mr. Vaca.
Evening, Your Worship, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, and Merry Christmas. I'm going to try and be very brief. I do want to deal with some misconceptions that you've heard this evening. First of all, my clients have only been the owners of this residence for the past year. So don't damn them for four years of illegality before then. As soon as they became aware that there was an issue, they came in, sat with planning staff, and we've been working on this application. Now, what you've heard is that there's constant partying at the residence. The predominant use of this residence has been for long-term tenants. One tenant was there for more than eighteen months. There've been a number of tenants who have been there for more than one, two, three months at a time. You've heard Mrs. Veal has spoken to a number of neighbors in other areas. However, obviously, it shouldn't speak to anyone on Hickson Avenue. There's a petition before you, signed by twelve residences on Hickson Avenue, none of which are related. And you would have thought that if there was such a noise problem on the street, there'd be other people complaining. Now, I want to make three street points, basically. First of all, once again, you have the petition. I handed the original up to Mr. Arfida earlier this evening. You'll see that all of the petitioners are on Hickson Avenue, except one on Ferguson Avenue. And the petition specifically reads that they are in support of the application, and furthermore, they recognize that the subject property is a real asset to the neighborhood. A great deal of money has been invested in this property by the previous owners, the owners of the Great Wolf Lodge, and my clients continue to maintain the property in pristine Now, you've heard that there's a use called a cottage rental dwelling that differs from a bed and breakfast in your bylaw. My understanding is, and Mr. Hurlovich can correct me if I'm wrong, the city in the past has considered fifteen applications for cottage rental dwellings. All of them have been approved. I would submit to you, Your Worship, members of council, that of the fifteen, this application is amongst the best suited in terms of location and abutting property. You'll see it's on a corner property. To the north, we have a city park. a corner property. To the north, we have a city park. Beyond the city park, we have the Great Wolf Lodge. To the west, across the street, we have a triplex. And to the rear, we have a nine-unit apartment building. There's quick access to Victoria Avenue and to the Niagara River Parkway. And quite frankly, if you're a family coming into the city of Niagara Falls and you want to rent a home for a few nights a week, less than 28 days as the bylaw defines it, this is a good location for that type of use. Thirdly, I would submit that a cottage rental dwelling provides an important option to tourists and traveling families. This is an issue I have in my own family, there's five of us. It's tough to stay in a hotel room with five people and young children. You want to have your own kitchen, you want to have your own TV, you want to have your own space, you want to be able to lock yourself in a room so you don't have to hear the kids for, for a little while. Well, this provides that option. The city has recognized 15 of set accommodations in the past. And I would submit this type of use is exactly what the city and the tourism industry is pushing for. They want families to stay longer, to spend more time here, spend more money here. And that's what this use predominantly encourages. Now, Mrs. Veal has given us quite a, quite a picture of what takes place at this property. I would submit to you that the fact of the matter is that any issues have been isolated and certainly have not been persistent. At the neighborhood meeting, we had a good discussion with Mrs. Veal, Andrew Bryce was there in behalf of the city, and we suggested a number of options which we think can mitigate any of her concerns. And those have been laid out in writing to Ms. Veal, copied to the city's planning department. I've never received a response to the offer that was made, but I just want you to know the six items which my client has recommended and has offered to Ms. Veal. First of which, my client is prepared to plant a six-foot cedar hedge all along the side lot line of the property to give Ms. Veal some privacy, mitigate whatever noise concerns there may be. Between the two dwellings, there's windows on the side of each dwelling which basically face each other. So you could be in one house and look into the other person's house, into Mrs. Veal's house. My client's prepared to put in a privacy glass insert in his window to give Ms. Veal some privacy. My client has offered to erect a gazebo on the rear deck, all sided in, closed in gazebo, once again, to mitigate noise concerns. My client has offered to give her contact numbers where he and his wife can be reached 24 hours a day if there's any issues whatsoever. Fifth, my client is going to prepare detailed rental contracts. In the contracts, there will be, the house rules will be clearly set out, they'll be posted in the house, posted on the deck, specifically dealing with issues of noise, parking, city's requirements for noise and parking, and most importantly, there will be a security deposit obtained from the guests and they will forfeit that security deposit if they break the house rule. Finally, my client's prepared to install a security camera at the rear of the property to record the guests' activities. Once again, no response has been received from Mrs. Veal to that offer.
Okay.
Your Worship, the test is land planning, land use planning principles. You have your recommendation from your experts, your planning staff. I would submit to you that the use is clearly compatible with this neighborhood. If it wasn't, we wouldn't have almost the entire Hickson Avenue street signing a petition. And once again, keep in mind that if you do approve this, the client will be obtaining a license from the city. That license has to be renewed every year, and if there are issues with this operation, Mr. Clerk can deny the license. And my client is more than prepared to live by those rules. Once again, reiterates the offer that's been made to Ms. Veal in writing, which we have not received a response yet. And that's all I have to say, some 20 questions you may ask.
Okay, are there questions of council of Mr. Vaca on this application? Yeah, councillor Thompson.
So you're suggesting those six items would be automatically implemented if the approval is, takes place?
Absolutely. My client has committed to do it in writing to Ms. Veal.
Councillor Carrion.
Can maybe a condition of this approval?
Uh huh. Mr. Yes, yeah. Mr. Hurlivich, you can confirm that, yes?
Yes, we have conditional zoning abilities.
Okay. And Mr. Hurlivich has that letter that lists the six items, so there's a detailed record of what's been offered.
Yes, Ms. Veal, you want a question of the applicant?
Councillor, which is I would respond to the letter that I've seen.
Well, what's the, what's the wish of council you'd like to hear? Okay, councillor. Okay, well, if you'd like to maybe approach the mic, Ms. Veal.
The six items that were suggested in the letter delivered to me, that a gazebo be erected so that people may permit, that are not allowed to smoke inside the house, can smoke outside, that's probably one plus. That probably should have been done a long time ago, but that's okay. Surveillance cameras, in my experience at the casino, and Mr. Adams, the applicant, a former surveillance employee at the casino, should very well know where that surveillance, surveillance cameras do not deter actions of people. The cedar trees that they plan on planting would have to be mature in excess of height of over seven or eight feet because the fence that they would plan to put them on, the trees would not receive any sun. I'm an avid gardener, I know the trees won't work, they would have to be transplanting them to somewhere matured. The frosted windows, sure, that would be great, again, another thing that should have been done a long time ago. And it was also mentioned that parking passes be issued out. All great ideas, but all at the same time, they're still tourist. I prefer residential. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, first off, are there any questions of council of the applicant? And if not, then you have a recommendation before you, is there a motion? Okay, well, before we do that, if there's no other questions, we'll close the public meeting. Are there any other questions of council? Okay, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now closed. Is there a motion for member of the council in this regard? Oh, no, one at a time, one at a time. Councillor Wayne?
Deny the approval, deny the recognition.
Okay, we have a motion from councillor Wayne to deny the application. Is there a seconder to the motion? Is there a seconder to that motion? Okay, then that motion fails. Is there another motion? Hello? Councillor Thompson?
Well, first of all, I've listened intently to both sides of the story, and I certainly believe that Ms. Veal or Ms. Veal is accurate in her assessment of the situation and has been bothered by this, obviously. However, I am impressed with the fact that the mitigating items that have been suggested that can be put in as conditions should also be able to resolve some of her concerns. The other thing is, this is a licensed cottage tourism opportunity, and the clerk has to license this, renew the license each year. If there are many complaints which can be brought to the attention of the city council, then the next time around, the license would not be issued or could be revoked. Is that, is that accurate, Mr. Clerk?
I don't have the authority to revoke a license. I can make a recommendation to council that a license be revoked. Yeah, there has to be a process.
Well, I wouldn't want to give you all the authority.
No, of course not.
Anyway, I, I think this is probably something, we're, you know, there's nothing wrong with tourists. We're in the tourist business in this community whether we like it or not, and I like it. So I'm certainly not going to suggest that somebody who has an opportunity, and it's right off of the River Road, there's an apartment building there. So I think as long as those safeguards are in place, as long as the opportunity to review the license annually, or any problems that can be brought to the attention of council, I think it's a fair and equitable way of handling the situation. Planning staff have recommended it, so I would move the motion, particularly in, with the fact that a motion for denial has not had a seconder. So unless you want to sit here for the rest of the evening, I'll make the motion.
Okay, moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Morocco. Okay, councillor, speak to it.
On that note from councillor Thompson, I will second his motion, only knowing that it will come back to us in one year. I like the fact that it's only going to be three bedroom.
Make some clarification on that.
No, it doesn't come back to you.
Every year is up for renewal.
No, it doesn't, the license renewal is an administrative process. It doesn't come up to council every year. Where it would come back was if there were so many complaints and concerns about this given property that myself, as the issue of our licenses, had paused not to renew the license. I can tell you, I've been the clerk for 10 years, I've never brought one back.
Okay, okay, that's fair enough. And based on a number of complaints, that it will come back, that would be fine. I like the fact that it is downed by, and that they are going to work with the young lady here, Ms. Veronica. So I would support it. Okay?
Councillor Carrion.
I'm assuming, Your Worship, through you and the clerk, that if this lady documents complaints that it's not run according to the way that Mr. Vaca says his clients run it, and she documents complaints, that it will end up coming back to us in that case.
Well, you have my word, I've dealt with Ms. Veal, she, and I understand her concerns. The problem will be what happens if there are three or four noise complaints during the summer because of, you know, certain clientele that happen to be there. I mean, you know, I think it would have to be a pretty extreme case for me to come back to you and say, I think it's warranted that you not issue the business license. I mean, we would deal with complaints and our, with our other methods through the noise bylaw, et cetera, although I know from Ms. Veal's point of view, part of our process asks that two independent witnesses, if you will, do a noise log as far as noise incidences. And she feels that just due to the location of the property, that might not be possible. She may be the only directly affected property.
I, I understand that, Mr. Clerk. The only thing is, I see that by the suggestion that Mr. Vaca's making with the things that the owner's providing, that he's going to provide numbers to call, and that I'm assuming that the owner is going to do his due diligence to make sure that the place runs without a problem, and that in that case, that she will be calling those numbers. And if she doesn't get satisfaction, and if there are a lot of complaints and he doesn't do what he says, that would be justification to come back to us. I understand that this is a bit of an awkward situation, and I'm torn between those two, but I think we should give him an opportunity to do what he says he's going to do. The only thing is, I'd like to see it come back if he doesn't do what he says he's going to do. And I know, being in this business, that the owner of an establishment has all the rights to throw someone out if they don't live by the rules of the place. We evict people all the time. They sign that they're going to do this and they're not going to do that. And if you do not abide by the rules of the hotel and you're bothering the people in the room beside you, we evict and the police come and evict all the time and we keep the security deposit if they break the rules. And sometimes re-rent the room again, but anyway.
Just gave them some ideas, councillor. Are there any other councillors that would like to comment on this before we call the vote? Okay, we've got a motion by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Morocco, that we approve the recommendation. We'll call the vote. Oh, wait, the clerk wants comment.
I would just say, just to be safe, that, that you're approving the recommendation with those suggested mitigating factors.
Yes, with the six recommended amendments. Is that right? Yep, moving second, okay, great. Then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, one opposed. So it's approved. All right, thank you. Yes, councillor Wayne?
And I'd just like to ask for a report on dealing with noise complaints and lost revenues from where people don't get these licenses they're supposed to be getting.
Okay, so we had a, a motion by councillor Wayne to ask for the noise complaints?
Basically what I said earlier about how calling the police to, on noise matters really doesn't do any good. The clerk pointed out the problem with, we want these two households to prosecute under our noise bylaw. And in cases like this where there's only one household being affected, it's a little bit difficult. So when people are suffering with noise issues, it's a really frustrating thing for them, especially when they look to the authorities and don't seem to get any help. So I'd like staff to investigate what can be done to improve this. And also, what do we do in cases where, you know, five years worth of license fees have been avoided? Because really, we're encouraging this, you know, violations of the zoning bylaw by not insisting on collecting these fees or having some sort of penalty for not abiding by it. So I'd just like staff to report back on these matters.
So is that just a direction, or do we need a motion?
Sure, sure, it's just a direction.
Okay, oh, wait a minute. She's supposed to give you a direction.
Well, you're asking staff to do work, so you make a motion and get it approved to, to direct us to do that work.
Okay, so we have a motion by councillor Wayne, seconded by councillor Morocco. Any discussion on the motion to ask staff to investigate, can you exactly read that, councillor?
I know exactly what she's asking for and I can do that. So just pass the motion, I want to get out of here.
Pass the motion.
Councillor Thompson?
I just want to make it clear that what I heard tonight about the five years, this, this applicant has owned it for a year. So, and when they found out about it, they come in and have been working with staff, this is the case where they neglected paying the fee for a five-year period. So I think that's important to note.
Councillor Wayne?
Okay, the four years of the owner previous to the man.
Well, I, I think what councillor Wayne is asking for is something similar that's allowed under the building code, for example, if somebody builds without a permit. I think she's asking whether we could impose such penalties on a business license if we knew the licensee, for example, had been operating and hadn't received the license. I know my staff, for example, occasionally we will get some licensees who will come in, they will have had their license in, say, 2009, they neglected to renew in 2010, and have come back in 2011. And Lydia in my office is always very vigilant to say, hey, you missed last year, give me the extra 40 bucks or whatever the fee is. So I mean, informally we try that, but I think you're talking about something a little different, but we'll look into whether there's any authority.
So, Mr. Clerk, if you could just please, for the rest of council, they know what they're voting on. So basically, what is the motion that we're voting on?
Councillor Wayne is asking for a report on, on how we deal with, with noise complaints and methods of dealing with noise complaints, what the best methods are. And I understand what she's getting at. I know there are difficulties vis-à-vis our process and dealing with the police on these issues. We go through these all the time, and I think it would be very good to have an information report, in fact, just for our purposes as bylaw, so we can bring that report to the police in the springtime. We always seem to have to deal with a new regime at the police station on these noise issues, which always try to get them on-site because obviously our bylaw guys, although we have a weekend bylaw guy during the summer month, he's not working at 2:00 AM in the morning, and it really falls to the police a lot of times to respond to those. And as Ms. Veal pointed out very eloquently, you know, sometimes there just isn't that follow-up by the police because they're dealing with other items. And we've tried to get them to make a record of all these numerous complaints so we have more power. If we do lay charges under our noise bylaw, we can at least say, hey, there's these 12 incidences where the police were called out and there's a record of these 12 incidences.
Okay, so we have the motion, duly seconded. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. All right.
Ice cream.
Okay, next up, very briefly, mayor's reports and announcements. First off, it's with sadness that I announced that Janet, known as Neta Matheson, has passed away. Janet was a longtime city employee who retired after more than 40 years of working for the city of Niagara Falls. And, and I understand councillor Thompson would like to address this as well. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, I was a longtime friend of Neta Matheson, who worked at the city for well over 40 years, I think 45.
over 40 years, I think 45. She was the administrative assistant to the, to 11 different mayors, and she was, without exception, an extremely dedicated individual to City Hall itself. She was extremely involved in her church and the activities there, and also in so many different areas throughout the community of worthwhile and different causes. So we've lost a giant of a person in the last couple of days, Neta Matheson, and everybody at City Hall who has had anything to do with City Hall over a 40-year, five-year period certainly knew who she was, and I'm sad personally that she's passed, and we'll always remember her. She was a very special and rare individual.
Thank you. Our thoughts are certainly with her family at this time. Next up, this weekend, this past Saturday, was a downtown candlelight stroll. It was a very spirited crowd, it was a very cold night. We had Miss Teen Canada from Edmonton here, Nikita Kohan, and I asked her, I said, "Compared to Edmonton, this must feel really toasty." She said, "No, you know what, it's more damp cold here, it really goes right through you." So it doesn't matter if it's the summer, we've got the humidity, and it's, whenever we've got the damp cold, we get it on both ends. Looking ahead, the Niagara Falls Lions 40th Annual Major Draw Event will be December the 13th at Club Italia. That'll be tomorrow night, there'll be a dinner and draw for $5,000. Everyone is invited. And our Snow Buddy program is enrolling, and we are looking for volunteers. If you've got a student in your house, or you're a student, and you're looking to get your volunteer hours, your community hours for your school, or if you're a community member that's community-minded and you want to help out, we have an opportunity. I know Counselor Thompson just signed up for the Snow Buddy program. He'll come shovel your walkway, that's right. Yeah, it's just your walkways, your porches and whatnot. All you have to do, if you want to participate or find out more, go on the City of Niagara Falls website, niagarafalls.ca, click on Snow Buddies, you can find out how you can sign up to shovel, or possibly get shoveled. And lastly, we just want to say, on behalf of council, myself, Merry Christmas to everyone at home, that everyone has a safe and happy New Year's, and be safe on those roads. And that concludes the Mayor's remarks. Now we move on to Communications and Comments of the City Clerk.
I'll move the fireworks at the skyline.
Okay, fireworks for the skyline on New Year's Eve, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Inoney. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Item two, Leesum Municipality of Niagara, requesting comment on applications.
Move the request.
Move the request by Counselor Carrio for Metro, seconded by Counselor Mase. All those in favor? Okay, are there any additional items for council's consideration, Mr. Clerk?
Your worship, there is an additional resolution. I suggest we deal with the other resolution. It's the Niagara Music and Arts Expo. You may know Rick Rose, he organized that last year, did it on Queen Street, it was successful, he's doing it again this year in February, it'll be at the old NFCBI Theater. So he needs this resolution passed by council for his special occasion liquor license.
Okay, Counselor Thompson?
I would move that on behalf of Mr. Rose, and also the Scotiabank Convention Center liquor license.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Inoney. So any discussion on those? All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, we've got a couple of reports here. Number one, CD 2011-17, the 2012 Council Schedule. Counselor Carrio?
Your worship, I was glad to see this come back, and I spoke to some of the counselors, and I think that, and I've always thought that Mondays were a terrible night for our city council, and Mondays are a very bad night, or a very bad day for anybody in business, or anybody running a business. It's the absolute busiest day of the week for most people in our industry. So I would move, your worship, that we try Tuesday's schedule version two.
Version two, moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Is there any discussion? Counselor Wing?
Yes, I'm very sorry, but I can't support this. You know, I thought, first of all, the impact's on me personally, I'm going to have to get off the Humane Society Board, I might be able to make three meetings next year, if I stay on. I'll have to reschedule some medical appointments, you know, I've always counted on Tuesdays being the one night that I have open, except for the Humane Society Boards, which are meetings, which are the last Tuesday of the month. But the other thing that's more important is, I'm thinking about the inconvenience to the public. There's a lot of people who watch us on Monday nights, this is something they do on Monday nights, and I'm concerned that, you know, they're accustomed to watching us then, that this is going to be disruptive to them. I don't know if it's going to inconvenience any of the planning or stewardess, you know, lawyers, staffs, and peer re-bonds, but you know, if there's two other cities in the region with council meetings the same Tuesdays as well, you know, that might be difficult for them to do it. I'm just not comfortable with this change.
Okay, any other discussions from, yes, Counselor Mase?
No, your worship, I have no problem with that. I like the idea of Tuesdays, because as Counselor Carrio said, we get a chance to review things over the whole weekend, and sometimes you get a busy weekend, and you need that extra day to go over the notes. The other thing is, I could get some idea, staff as well have to come here on either the Monday night or the Tuesday night. Do they have any thoughts on this, or is it strictly council's decision?
Counselor Cao, did you have any comment, Mr. Cao?
Mr. Mayor, strictly your decision. I think a lot of the staff have gotten used to Monday nights, it certainly is up to council to decide which night they'd like to meet. We'll accommodate whatever council wishes.
There's your answer. Counselor Gates?
Yeah, I think I kind of agree with Counselor Wing. Some of the concerns are, to her point, is obviously, a lot of people do watch it on Monday, and it is easy to say, "Well, I'll do it on Tuesday," but they have, may have other plans. The second thing is, I think we might not have quite as many meetings. I don't like that, I think we don't meet enough as it is, so I think I wanted to say that's a concern as well. I do have the concern, as I expressed downstairs, on getting the information to it, so Counselor Carrio has valid points. But I think the Monday night is a better night, particularly for the schedule that I've put together for next year, for around being here and not missing any meetings. So changing it is a tough, tough goal for me, for making sure I'm here at council meetings, because that would get my number one priority, so.
Okay, is there any other discussion around, yeah, Counselor Wing?
Thanks, yes, Counselor Gates reminded me, I did a quick tally of the schedule options here earlier this evening. Tuesday's schedule version two, we're going to have just five meetings in the first three months of next year, which is traditionally when we really meet a lot and work on the budget, and we'll have one meeting in the two summer months, July and August. Tuesday's schedule version one, well, we'll do a little bit better, we'll have six meetings in the first three months, we'll still have just one meeting between July and August, whereas if we stick with Monday night, we'll be up to seven meetings in the first three months, and we'll actually get a meeting a month in the summertime, which I think is as soon as we really need to get.
Counselor Carrio?
So I didn't want to really have to debate it, but if you go by the, by what we've seen in our agendas over the last six months, there's not a whole lot of business going on in our city, and the amount of meetings that are set for the Tuesday's schedule version two, is my feeling that there's plenty of meetings, and if, if we need to call another meeting, and we're not up to our neck in meetings, it's very easy to call another meeting and put another meeting in, your worship. It looks to me like we're struggling to fill the meetings that we do have. We seem to have to have two hours of amputations, just to fill up enough time so Kojiko can have a decent show.
Counselor Morocco?
Your worship, I'm supporting it, because I have to honestly say that there's a lot of times, and it's been quite a few times, that we don't get our package until probably Thursday, and the majority of us working and traveling, getting back, you might get back on the weekend, and then you're trying to get a hold of staff on Monday that are extremely busy, trying to get prepared for the Monday night's meeting. So I have to say that sometimes you're just caught short running around, and you're trying to address them when you're here downstairs in committee, to try and find out a little bit more information. So I just think that Tuesday probably would be far better to get the information from staff, and I don't see why we're going to lose any meetings, I think if there's business, like Counselor Carrio said, we add more meetings to the agenda, we've done that before. So I think we're here for the citizens, and if we're needed, we're called to the table to make adjustments, and we'll have a meeting. If we can even try it just for one year, I don't see why, that's not a big deal.
That's a good point, too, we could, if we, if it does, yeah, get approved, and we try it for 2012, we can evaluate at the end, and find out how it worked out with staff and whatnot, that's a possibility for sure, good idea. Yes, Counselor Wing?
Just a question, then, are we moving away from our insistence on having all our meetings broadcast on Kojiko?
Through the chair, no, in fact, that was part of the rationale behind the schedule. I mean, you know, the one priority was that, I know council wants all of its meetings covered by Kojiko, so my first phone call was to Kojiko. They said, "We cover Sorrel and Welland, those meetings are usually on the same Tuesdays, so if you can avoid those Tuesdays, we could probably accommodate you," so that was the impetus for the Tuesday schedules. Those are based on when Welland and Sorrel aren't meeting, so we'll have Kojiko coverage. I mean, that's why you've got the little bit of a weird anomaly in August, but maybe if they cancel, if one of those two municipalities cancel one of their meetings in August, we may be able to, you know, call a meeting for one of those other Tuesdays.
My concern was that, it seems to be a feeling that if we need extra meetings, we can just schedule them. So if there's other council meeting on some of those other Tuesday nights, then we may be faced with a choice where either we can't just schedule it, and we're going to have to just not meet, or we're going to have to forego having the Kojiko broadcast.
Well, through the chair, most of the times you've scheduled special meetings in the last few years appear to be in the summer, and I think in the summer, there may be even more flexibility as far as timing and dates. I mean, you had a, you had a couple of special meetings in August of this past year, and then one was on a Thursday, I believe, if memory serves me correctly, on the people mover issue, and I think we even started that meeting a little bit earlier, I think we might have started that at four, yeah. You know, so there is a little more flexibility in the summer months.
Counselor Inoney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're paid to be here, it's not me what night it is, to show up. If you have a job, and your job shifts, you have to shift with your job. So to me, they're way Monday or Tuesday, I don't care, I don't want to see any people see us with the perception that we work less. So I'd hate to see our schedule cut back, but I really don't care Monday, Tuesday, we have to be here, we have to be here.
Okay. There's any other comments? None, then we'll call the vote. Okay, motion on the floor to go with schedule?
Tuesday option.
Tuesday option two.
Version two.
Version two, and we'll try it out for the year, and reevaluate. Okay, that's the motion. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, it's approved. Thank you. And item two, Report F-2011-61, Approval of Interim 2012 Spending Limits. Moved by Counselor Mase, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Discussion, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I'm just, while we're doing this, through you to Counselor Holman, Crescent Road, off of, what is that, Dorchester Road, did you have a look at it? Pictures?
Yes.
Does that, does that have a shot of getting some work done?
Through the mayor, it is in rough shape, we definitely need to proceed with design, but believe it or not, it's not one of the worst ones that we have to deal with.
Not one of the worst ones? The curbs are hanging out, broken and smashed, and hanging out under the roadway.
I understand that, Mayor, but we're looking at trying to optimize the amount of money that we have available to us, and although we do have to do some design work on it, it's not likely to go to construction until 2013, 2014.
Wow, this is so bad, and maybe there are some that are worse, maybe our priorities aren't right, but I'd like to have a report back on Crescent Road with pictures, so that the council can see what we're dealing with. I've never seen anything like this before. I'd so move.
Moved by Counselor.
Motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor?
Yeah, the motion on the floor to approve the report, and after that, we can deal with that.
Include this in the motion.
Okay, did you make your, did you make your, your motion?
No, pardon me.
Oh, yeah, pardon you. Okay, we'll do two motions, eh? First motion on the interim 2012 spending?
If you want to move it.
To the mover? Okay, all right, good, so we're going to move the two of them? Everybody understand? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Ratification in camera, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, your worship, earlier this evening, item that a two-year lease with Coach Canada and Greyhound be approved to operate the out-of-town bus terminal at 4555 Bridge Street for the purpose of providing ticket vending and bus parcel service delivery, and that the lease be effective February 1st or earlier as required, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the necessary leases.
Okay, there's the in-camera. Do we have motion? Moved by Counselor Inoney, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor? Okay?
We're going to be done.
Resolution, we've got a resolution from the, regarding New Year's Eve? We did that one, okay. Consent agenda. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Worship, I'd like to pull out 2011-49, and then I would move the rest of the agenda.
Okay, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Discussion, Counselor Gates?
I'd just like to pull, 2011-57, he's got a couple of questions on.
2011-57, got it, okay?
Thank you.
Counselor Wing?
Yes, just a question on 2011-17, and some comments on 2011-45.
Okay, okay, we'll tell, we've got those four, both. We'll, we've got a motion to pass the rest. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? All right, so we'll go through them one at a time. First off, Counselor Peter Angelo, MW-2011-49.
Thank you, worship, and we're dealing with the decorative walls that are outside of some subdivisions, and I noticed on page two of the report, down to where it's under the staffing and legal implications, the last line says, "Clauses have been included in recent subdivision agreements requiring developers to place warning clauses in purchase and sale agreements, alerting potential lot owners to this condition." And I guess the condition would be that the, that the lot owner actually owns the wall and is responsible for the maintenance. That's correct. So my question would be, worship, how long ago did we start to make this a condition of subdivision agreement?
Mr. Mayor, we've provided a map of the locations that have decorative walls, there are a couple that have been brought to my attention since the report was issued, but for each one of those cases, as I understand it, the walls have been constructed on private properties. The one that comes to mind that hasn't been is one in Chippewa on Nassau, which is actually constructed in the Boulevard. We've been using this as a guideline, it's not a policy, so, you know, depending on the nature of the application, we've had to kind of deal with them on a place-specific base, but certainly the Mount Carmel area, most of the developments that took place in the late 80s, 90s, all had this requirement to construct gateway features and decorative walls on private property. And we've had searches done on some of those properties that show that the developer has made it the owner's obligation to maintain those fences and gateways, I guess forever. So the difficulty the city's having is, you know, how do we, how do we enforce that arrangement between the owner and the developer? And I think what we're saying here as part of this policy is that we don't want to be committed to having to fix these up at some point in the future, that it really is a matter between the developer and the private property owner.
I think he's asking, when, Mr. Holman, that was a good answer, though, but the clauses that in recent years have been added to subdivision agreements requiring developers to place warnings. in the purchase and sale agreement, alerting the potential of the condition of the wall. So he's saying, how long has that been the case?
Well, ones I've seen have gone back 10 years, and that's all that I can really comment on.
So for at least, okay, from the last 10 years, that's been added in?
So that's in all of our subdivisions that we've been approving for the last 10 years, but there's been clauses in there that the developer has had to put in, notifying the homeowner that should they buy that particular piece of property, that that wall becomes their property and the maintenance of it becomes their property as well?
Are you asking me that the city requests that, or has the developer taken upon them?
I mean, that would be part of a condition of the subdivision agreement that we would have with the developer, that they would put that type of clause in there. I mean, I know in the past, when we've approved different subdivisions, whether they be next to, the one I can remember is an industrial area, we required that the developer put a condition on all of the lots that were for sale, letting homeowners know that, you know, there was a caution there. And the way that I read, the way that I read this report, it seems that the city has made it a condition of subdivision agreements that we've passed with developers, or that we agreed to with developers, that the developer must let that homeowner know that it's their property and their responsibility to maintain. Is that the case, like, do we have that as a requirement?
Well, I guess by virtue of the fact that we don't allow them to be constructed on public property, the developer's taken upon themselves to notify the individual property owners. Whether or not we insist that, we see that on the agreements of purchase and sale, I'm not sure that that's been part of our process. Certainly something we haven't dealt with in municipal work. We may want to get some additional directions when we...
Okay, but it does say in the report, clauses have been included in recent subdivision agreements requiring developers to place warning clauses. So that would mean to me that we're placing a requirement on the developer to place a warning clause in purchase and sale agreements, alerting potential lot owners to this condition. And I guess my question is, I'm wondering, have we been doing that, and if so, for how long?
Well, I mean, I'd have to follow up on the process, what happens between, because there's a lot of conditions that come out of the draft plan of subdivision, for example, or the plan of subdivision. Where we wouldn't necessarily have the benefit of the landscape plans and all the engineering plans. So it would have been handled through staff direction to the developer.
Okay.
I'd have to check the communication between the legal department and the developer to see that that issue is dealt with.
Sure, and I'd love to pass the report back to staff, Your Worship, and get the answer to that. And I just want to say, I mean, I'm in full agreement with that clause being in there. And I think it's best if we actually notify the homeowner that the lot that you're buying has that type of decorative wall on it, and that it would be their, I guess, responsibility to maintain and to put monies into, to fix up the wall in the future. And I guess the other thing that I'd like to see the report, or in the report, is if we haven't had that type of requirement in there, then where does it leave everyone that has a decorative wall on their lot right now?
Well, Mr. Mayor, they would have a, they would have a clause in there, registered on the title of their property, that says that they're responsible. And I mean, I couldn't tell you, the city wouldn't force them to reestablish the wall. It would be a matter that they would have to resolve between them and the original developer. Now, quite often, if developments take place, it's a, they'll establish a company just for that particular project, and it might be disbanded, which means that the property owner has really no obligation to maintain that. But that's something that they should really pursue with, you know, through their lawyer.
So I guess my next question then was, I mean, if I own the corner house and I have one of those walls on my property, can I just take it down?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. So I'm not required then to rebuild the wall, or to maintain it, or?
Not in our eyes, in the city's eyes. I mean, if there's still a contractual arrangement between them and the developers, the development company's still in place, there may be an obligation, but that's something that has to resolve.
Okay, I'll wait till the report comes back to you.
So there's a motion first to refer it back to staff, by Counsel Peter Angelo? Okay, yeah. Okay, seconded by Counsel Morocco, and you'd like to speak to it?
You know, I think Counselor Peter Angelo had some good points there. I was, in my notes, I actually had a, wrote and written down, sorry, getting late, written down that we maybe asked staff to set out a set of standards to the quality of these fences that are decorative walls that are being constructed, so that we actually have control of the design and the material that's being put up. I think that everyone's familiar with Orchard Grove Subdivision and Beaverton Valley. There was some friends over there that said the city had to go in and repair that. And I'm thinking, well, why now is the city going to repair this fence? And I don't believe that's in our budget. So that's kind of set a precedent in the future, that that's not something that the city's going to do. Either developers are going to put this money out there, or we have a standard. Exactly, to counter Peter Angelo's point, is that, you know, the owners have to be aware that if you have that, you're responsible to maintain it, to fix it, or, you know, you take it down, but it's not up to the city. So I would like to make sure that we actually have some kind of guideline set out on the design and the material used to build them.
So come back also with some kind of quality and design standards specifications? Yep, Counsel Wing?
And I was just wondering, it said other altern, on page two, other alternatives to be considered included. And the second one was permit construction of permanent features on municipal property, road allowance, with the provision of funds for perpetual care. I was just wondering if we can explore that option a little bit more? If the perpetual care fund was big enough, that's the one way to ensure uniformity in terms of the time and method of renewal, so you don't have Joe on the south side fixing his up and John on the north side tearing it down, or, you know, using a different technique. And, you know, you lose the symmetry that is there originally. So I guess I could explore that option a little bit more as well.
Okay, and exploring Option Two. Okay, so we've got the refer to staff to answer questions from Counsel Peter Angelo, also to ask for quality design standards, and to explore Option Two further. Okay? Any other comments from counsel? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, great. Next, we've got Counsel Gates, who asks for MW-2011-57, transfer the pumping station to the region of Niagara from Garner Southwest and Grassy Brook Pumping Station.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Daddie. I just, I got a couple of questions for staff, because on the report, on page two of it, it talks about the Gardner Pumping Station being 2,800, 2,800, and the other one, Grassy Brook, being just over 2 million. And what I'm asking is, what is the total cost of the pumping station? Because that's not the number that I had, was kind of had, and, which obviously would include the land and the prep and all that kind of stuff. Does that include all that in that number? Does that include everything?
No. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, the pumping stations themselves are part, a component of a larger infrastructure program. The Grassy Brook West area totaled all in 8.1 million dollars, and the Garner Southwest area, that included the pumping station, was 6.6. So the components that you're seeing that we're transferring is actually the direct contracting cost of the pumping station component.
Not the entire project?
Not the entire project, because the entire project included underground work, numerous other components to it. But what we're transferring is the pumping stations themselves.
I understand.
The direct cost is being, is the amount identified.
Okay, so that's where the difference come in. Having said that, the total you gave me is about 14.5, and that's why those two numbers didn't jive when I took a quick look at it. So I guess the question, too, that I'd like to have answered, and I'm not so sure you could do that tonight, but I will ask it, is through the development charges that is going to pay for this, how much have we collected so far on development charges on the entire project? Would you, if you don't have that answer?
I don't have, I don't have that answer right now. Again, what we did, as you're well aware, and all council is well aware, is when the project was completed, we now have a, and this is why this report is in front of you, because there has been a change in the accounting rules, we needed to close out the project. We needed to fund the project and not leave it unfunded, and that's when we borrowed. We included the cost, the expected cost of borrowing, including any future interest charges in our DC rate bylaw, and it's intended that we will collect that money over the future course of it. But I can provide you, not right now, but I will as a future report, what we've collected thus far and what's outstanding.
Thanks, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, to that point, Counsel Ryanone?
I start to twitch when you start to talk about Garner Grassy Brook. The reality is, and I think we were getting to, is we have 14.7 million dollars debt. We built these two pumping stations. When I called our CIO today and said, "So let me get this clear." We built these two pumping stations at 14.7 million dollars. We did not get the development charges. The staff who we employed at the time of the day told us we would get, so we ended up going, debenturing 14.7 million. We're now going to give this asset to the region so that we save $36,000 a year. So this is what we did. We built two pumping stations that, by the way, was the region's responsibility, as I found out today, not ours. Because our CIO said, "Well, that's a regional responsibility," and they would have got to it, it just wasn't on your timeline. So we spent 14.7 million dollars to build two pumping stations. That wasn't even our responsibility, I might add, that we are now going to give to the region so that we don't pay $3,000 a month to maintain the pumping station. And then I said, "Well, do we have to do it?" He said, "Well, yeah, because in the end, once they're paid off, they go to the region anyway." Because it's a regional, I mean, it's regional responsibility. So basically, we have no choice, because we're just going to save $36,000 a year to pay maintenance for something we should never built in the first place. Did I summarize that right, Mr. Todd? Because I'm pretty certain that was our conversation. You weren't as sarcastic as I was, but pretty much I'm there.
Pretty close.
Okay. Oh, yes, and I did forgive him for that, too. Because he said, "When you made that mistake." I said, "No, Mr. Todd, you didn't make that mistake, because you weren't employed with us at the time." So it bugged my mind.
You were pretty close.
Yeah.
The one thing is that it's 3,000 per pumping station.
Oh, 72?
Yes. But if I could put that in perspective, and, Mr. Mayor, the reason why we have this here tonight is that the cost of the pumping stations alone were around 5 million. The total project, which is pipes in the ground and all that, was a larger number. But what we're doing tonight is we're recommending to you that even though for the next 20 years, well, 18 years, on a 20-year debenture, we'll be paying off that debt. By avoiding the extra $76,000 a year over that 20 years, that's about 1, what is that, 1.2, 1.3 million dollars, that we'll avoid having to pay to the region for those maintenance costs. So that's why the report's before you tonight, Mr. Mayor. So eventually, those pumping stations would have had to have been transferred to the region. We feel it's better to transfer them now, continue to pay the debt, and avoid having to pay the region an additional 1.3 million in maintenance costs, because once we transfer them, the maintenance costs will become part of their responsibility.
Good explanation. Counsel Ryanone?
To something we should have let the region spend 14.7 million dollars in the first place, but because we had a staff report with three signatures on it, this council paid 14.7 million dollars to take over a regional responsibility. Who's the deniers now?
Any further comment to Mr. Cio?
Just to clarify, we're only talking about the pumping station part. So the bigger project, none of the pipe things would have ever been transferred, but it's just the pumping station part, so that's the clarification.
Mr. Mayor, just another thing that will happen. By transferring the pumping stations at a value, Empac will pick these pumping stations up, and we will get a PIL from the region for those assets, which, again, depending on the value, Mr. Mayor, of the assets, we will get revenues moving forward once the transfer is complete. The other item, it's important to note, is we already pay through our waste, waste, not waste, no, the sewer surcharge every year, fixed cost, we do pay across the region as part of our fixed charge for all the maintenance of these pumping stations. So we do avoid, if the CIO pay, an additional charge or a double comp.
Okay. Yes, Counsel Carrillo? Pardon me? Not yet, okay. Moved by Counsel Carrillo, seconded by Counsel Ryanone. All those in favor? Okay, so two more here. Oh, did you have a comment, I'm sorry, Counselor?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, somebody said, you know, eventually those pumping stations would have had to have been assumed by the region. Well, eventually, those pumping stations would have had to have been built by the region, not by the city. And I'm really glad that those three signatures, the burial, the affairs of those three signatures are no longer with us, because this is a terrible, terrible error. And I'm really happy that we've moved to better information recording upward from those times, because, you know, garbage in, garbage out. The council decision was only as good as the information that was given to council, and unfortunately, there are a lot of information lacking.
And just so that I'm not beating up my fellow council members, I said to Mr. Todd today, not one time, and I have all those reports that are taller than me, not one, without the heels, not one time through that entire process that Counselor Wing and I stood up here every week and told you the same thing, not one time in those reports did any of the senior staff that are no longer employed here tell us, "Oh, by the way, if we don't do it, the region will," and it's their responsibility, not ours. Not one time. So to her, to the council's defense at that time, really bad information.
Okay, all right, so we've already voted on that. We've got two more items. Counsel Wing, you wanted RC-2011-17, sale of ice at reduced rates?
Yeah, it was just a question, I've got to find it. On page three, just above where it says financial, stopping legal implications, it says, "The second measure is to develop a system of identifying and advertising with available ice rental opportunities to prospective customers utilizing the internet email mailing list." Now, is that second measure in terms of, is that an option, or is that a step that's going to be taken? Because I'm kind of surprised we're not doing that already.
Do you want us, Ms. Moldenhauer?
Through to the Mayor. Currently, when we do have ice that cancels, we do promote it through emailing all of our user groups. We do that already. So what we're saying here is kind of once we have exhausted all of that, and we do have remaining ice that has been canceled for a normal process, then we would be advertising this available ice after we've gone through all of our existing users.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Okay, so you moved the recommendation? Okay, moved by Counsel Wing, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, great. And the last one here, TS-2011-45. Counsel Wing, subdivision agreement update to parking and traffic bylaw?
Yes, it was the comment on the second page, that all costs associated with the sign purchase and labor costs are being paid in full by developers. Well, we had a request a couple of years ago for sign purchase and labor costs for a certain type of sign to be paid by residents. And what it was, was it was a neighborhood where the children like to play with each other out in the streets or speeding traffic, and the one father approached us and said, "Can't I get one of those slow watch for children signs?" And we hadn't gotten very far on that yet. I know I've seen those very signs in Niagara Lake. I've seen those very signs in St. Catherine's. And I actually looked on the Ontario Traffic Council online forum earlier today, and actually, there was a very interesting comment from the City of Toronto, and it was, "The City of Toronto does not have a specific policy about posting signs advising of children playing along the local residential street. However, if we are requested by a counselor, we will install a generic watch for children sign. If the situation warrants, a playground symbol sign might be posted instead. We have been asked to post signs with a specific wording, 'Slow, children at play,' but we will not do this because the wording might be construed as a commentary on the mental capacity of the children in the neighborhood." That was signed Ron Hamilton, manager of traffic operations for the City of Toronto. I learned from the same forum, though, that Mississauga has something similar in place. What they have, what they've done is a response to speeding traffic in residential neighborhoods, and as part of their, what is it? It's a comprehensive safe driving strategy. They have these neighborhood 'Drive Slowly' signs, and it's apparently an image of a child on a tricycle with the words, "Drive slowly, think of me." So it's those sort of signs that we were being asked about, and... So it's those sort of signs that we were being asked about and they must meet Ontario provincial standards because they're in all these other municipalities. I don't know why Niagara Falls is under some sort of different provincial standards than everybody else, but I would really like to get a report back on being able to put these up when requested and when there's a clear need and especially when you have a resident who's offering to pay for them. So that's my motion, is that we get a report back.
Moved by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Thompson. There you have it. Good question, but we'll get a report back, right? We'll get a report back. Do you want to comment on that, Counselor? Okay, so we're going to get a report back. Carl, is that good? Okay. Okay, moved by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Thompson for report back on this signage. All those in favor? Okay. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I just forgot to mention on the small business enterprise center, just to complement our staff, Serge Filicetti, very positive move. We're always looking at how to start and we expect the private sector to do that so often. Not happening as much now. And for them to take the initiative and also to stimulate some activity on Queen Street, I think is exceptional and I just wanted to mention that because I think it's extremely worthwhile. And also their newsletter, maybe they could send a copy of that to NEDC at the region so they could reproduce that to show what's happening in the region.
Well, a great comment. Angela Davidson and of course Serge Filicetti, working closely together. And the good thing, as you mentioned, Counselors, as we're going to be on Queen Street with a street presence now, there's going to be an incubator aspect, which is going to help incubate new businesses. And that's going to be the genesis for more growth in the city, for economic growth. So we've already approved that, which is great. So thank you for bringing that up. Kind of slid by and I know we had them in the audience here waiting, I think, for that to come forward. Okay, we still have to approve TS 2011-45. Counselor Wing, you had pulled it, so do you want to move it? Moved by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, great. Round to bylaws, Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments? There are not? Okay. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves, first time reading of the bylaws. All those in favor? Okay.
Bylaws 2011-148 to 2011-155, read a first time.
Second and third by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? Okay.
Bylaws 2011-148 to 2011-155, read a second and third time and passed.
Is there any new business tonight? Yes, Counselor Gates?
Thanks very much, Mayor Deodaddie. And I'm going to, I started off the meeting talking about the motion that we sent to the NHS around the hip and I can't tell you how disappointing it is, two months later, to find out that Dr. Kevin Smith has not, to this day, answered our request for an answer in writing in light of what's transpired this week again in the Niagara Falls hospital with the announcement that we now have a CDEP outbreak on one of our wards. It was announced today, I'm not sure if my fellow counselors know, that we are now up to six. And one of the things that transpired, why there's been this outbreak, is that two of the people that had CDEP, and one of the things that kind of put the light bulb over it is if you have diarrhea, particularly severe diarrhea, certainly would make you think you have CDEP. They put two people in with a CDEP that didn't have CDEP and now it's spreading this ward. And the part that really upsets me, quite frankly, is the very reason why we ran the rally going back in May is I believe the citizens of Niagara Falls have the right to know. And that's what it's all about. And maybe these two individuals that ended up in a room with somebody with CDEP, if they knew there was a CDEP outbreak, maybe they would have said something and said, you know what, are you sure we should be here with what's going on? So again, the Niagara Falls residents weren't told, the NHS, through their spokesperson has said very clearly that it didn't meet the threshold of the number of CDEPs in the hospital. And I firmly believe that when over 30, I think it's 37 or even more if you count long-term care facilities have died with CDEP, I think when there is one outbreak there, at least the public should know. And in this particular case, it is spreading, it's up to six. Originally, it was only four, or actually, it was only three, then it went to four, now it's up to six. So I think it's important that the hospital improvement plan be revisited by Dr. Smith. Here's another example, is the hospital improvement plan working for Niagara? And I believe it is not. And the fact that it's in our own hospital is certainly a concern for, I'm sure, all the residents of Niagara Falls. But to take a look at this council that took the lead role long before I got on council and said we got problems with our healthcare system in Niagara and in particular with the service cuts in Niagara Falls, and then we send a motion, supported unanimously by this council, and two months later, we haven't got a response, I think it shows total disrespect. And I know, Jim, you have met with Dr. Smith, but in fairness to the rest of council, I think you need to respond to our request in writing like we've asked them to. So having said that, hopefully, this outbreak gets contained quickly and nobody else pays the ultimate price of passing away from the CDEP, but obviously, that's a concern. So I wanted to raise that under new business. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gates. Counselor Anoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we spoke to Kevin Smith and we had a good long conversation with him, it was probably an hour fifty, an hour twenty minutes, long over the allotted time that we had started with, he highlighted to both you and I that the hip is not off the table. Reassessing the hip is not off the table. Nothing is off the table. While you don't have something in writing, I would assume, and I shouldn't do that, Dr. Smith told the mayor of Niagara Falls that is still on the table. So I'm sure with massive CDEP outbreaks, not making any excuses to the NHS ever, actually, it's in the, if you go on your BlackBerry, it is a highlight of the review today that the hospital acknowledges the mistake in putting the two patients together. They have a history of mistakes. But for Dr. Smith, he was very clear with Jim and I, and maybe we should have put out something to counsel ourselves to him, which is something we probably should have done, a summary of our conversation, but he was adamant that that is not off the table. The hip, he is looking at everything from numbers to statistics to space at the news site to everything and he said to us, the hip, revamping the hip or revisiting the hip is not off the table and if the numbers don't match, we'll be taking a look at that. And Jim assured him the numbers are not going to match. So, well, we didn't, we erred in not putting that out to council, so maybe it's something we should do, we both took notes. But just so that you understand, he made it clear to the mayor that he is addressing that and it is not going to be ignored, just so that, and...
Yes, thank you, Counselor, yes, Counselor Gates?
Well, I can appreciate Counselor Anoni and Counselor Deodaddie's meeting with the mayor, but the reality is, he never did respond and I think it showed total disrespect to the council. But I want to say clearly to what he told you, it's absolutely different than what he's telling when he was on the radio, which we obviously have taste of, that the hip isn't on the table. Now, he may have changed his mind after the pressures been put on, I don't know, but I certainly haven't seen that in writing. If he has said that the hip is certainly going to be looked at again, that would be good news to the entire Niagara region. But I will, I'm hoping that we get something in writing from him. I'm glad, I'm glad you met with us too, by the way.
Yes, we did. And the clerk would like to comment on this as well?
Yeah, two things. Number one, the motion that you made was at the October 24th meeting, I wasn't at that meeting. And then your subsequent meeting with Dr. Smith, I think, was the first week of November. And the letter didn't go out till after the meeting with Dr. Smith. I felt it was appropriate to wait till see what the result of that meeting was. I did consult with the mayor and really, the letter, it doesn't ask a question, it just basically reconfirms what the discussion was at the meeting with Dr. Smith and council's motion, which is, you know, we hope that you would, you know, fulfill the wish of our council, that you look at the hip again. I don't have the exact motion with me, I think you may have it with you. So I'm not sure what they're supposed to respond to. Yes, we're going to do it? No, we're not going to do it? I mean, you know, in fairness to them, I'm not really sure you're going to get a response.
Well, and also today too, I did receive a call from Sue Matthews, the acting CAO, interim CAO of the NHS, following up to some of the issues and challenges they have right now. I can tell you this, I spoke with Dr. Smith last week again as well, and they are absolutely aware of the sensitivity of the situation. They've been in regular contact, they're a phone call. I mean, I can get ahold of him at any time. He's given us his, I mean, they're as accessible as I've ever seen the NHS. And although you're absolutely right, Counselor, if anyone is making an attempt, I'd say right now, they're making a real noble attempt to reach out to the community. Yes, Counselor?
And I think it's important that they've done what we've asked, they brought in a suit from an independent investigator, Dr. Smith is doing it. Our premise here was not to go after Dr. Smith, not to smack him down for not answering us quickly enough, not to smack him down because he's got a million fires to put out. He asked us to be part of the solution and we said to him, and as you premise, that we've been doing this long before you got here, it seems we have done nothing and had no opportunity to do anything other than be critical. And we had the most honest, open conversation with somebody in charge for the first time since we were addressing the issue. And he asked us to be part of the solution. That's what we're doing. We'd been asked to be part of the solution by the NHS and been lied to our face a dozen times and we were very clear with him on that. I'm not prepared to slap down Dr. Smith right now until he doesn't do what he promised. He is working on doing what he promised now and that's certainly the request to council to go in and be an independent supervisor. So I'm not getting in a fight here with Dr. Smith. I'm not going to criticize him for doing what it is we asked him to do. If we don't have a response back that he feels he gave us verbally, I'm not getting into a public pissing fight with Dr. Smith.
There you go, right here, heard right here, counsel chambers. So either way, we, all of the concerns, I can't believe you said that either.
It was faster than I was coming to say that.
I reckon you're still getting sick because of it, but that's okay.
Well, and there's no doubt about it, we're not out of the woods, but the good news...